Okay, thank you. Please be seated. Welcome to the seventh meeting of municipal council for this year. I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishnaabik, Hodnoshoni, Leni Peewak and Atawandron peoples. We honour and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse Indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all treaties that are specific to this area: the two-row Wampum Bell Treaty of the Hodnoshoni Confederacy, Silver Covenant Chain; the beaver hunting grounds of the Hodnoshoni Nanfan Treaty of 1701; the McKee Treaty of 1790; the London Township Treaty of 1796; the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishnaabik; and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Anishnaabik and Hodnoshoni. The three Indigenous nations that are neighbours to London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames and Muncie Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique cultures, languages, cultures and customs. City of London is also committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific for this meeting, you can contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. With that, I will introduce our national anthem performer today. John Felner is born and raised Lenniner. His music lends itself to folk, pop and R&B, creating a sound that is both nostalgic and contemporary. A four-time Juno-nominated producer for Canadian artists, John found a deeper personal resonance when he began writing for himself. In 2023, he won both the Aeolian Hall Songwriters Contest and the Slate Music's It's Your Shot. With his second single, Broke Skin, in rotation across Canada's top 40 radio, John's presence continues to grow. After being selected to represent London in Hanover, Germany, international opportunities continue to open up for him. John will be travelling to the UK to represent London during the Sound of City Music Conference in Liverpool, England. Please rise and join me in welcoming John, who will now perform the national anthem for us.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see the rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, I'll now turn to disclosures of pecuniary interest. Okay, seeing none. Recognitions, I'm going to start with councillor Frank for the first recognition.
Thank you, and it is a pleasure to honour today Sandy Levin, whose dedication and perseverance has helped our environment and helped London's planning policies for the last couple decades. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here today because he serves alongside a few of us at Upper Thames River Conservation Authority, and they have a financial committee meeting right now. So he will probably watch this later as he watches most of our meetings, and so I'll say some nice things for him today. He has spent decades in service, both as a politician and as well as a community member, on many different environmental committees and advisory committees. And not in search for recognition or reward, but simply because he believes in protecting our environment and doing the right thing. And I really appreciate his mentorship. So getting started in London about 10 years ago, he was one of the people that everyone said, "Oh, you have to meet with Sandy. He'll give you the COEls' notes on, you know, planning policies and development charges." So without his help, I don't even imagine I necessarily would have gotten involved in politics in London because he really helped me navigate and gave me confidence that I could understand these really complex decisions that we make here. So I really appreciate his mentorship. And he's always available whenever I have an obscure question about environmental policy or planning policy from the '90s. He seems to still have the paper copy of reports from then and is able to provide that information quite readily. So I appreciate that, and on behalf of the community myself, thank you, Sandy. Again, I know you're not here, but I'm sure you'll watch this later. And I'm really grateful for the work that you've done in our community. And I know we haven't seen the last of you, as he'll be sitting on many committees still to come, but I wanted to mark this day just because he did present his last ECAC report at PEC. And so that final report is coming today at council, and it's also Earth Day, so I thought it was just a great time to recognise his great work. Thank you.
All right, next I'll go to deputy mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship, so colleagues. I rise today, and I'm wearing blue and white, not just because it's the Leafs in the playoffs, but for a big Leafs fan who's in the gallery today that I would like to recognise. Nine years ago, I took on the role of team manager for my nephew Ethan's minor Pee-wee hockey team. We call them the U11s now. They've changed the names a couple times. And it was a new guy, a non-parent, in the head coach role by the name of Matt Karen. And Matt is here today because I want to take an opportunity to recognise his commitment to the game and to the community. That was a heck of a first season with Matt. We finished first in the alliance with a championship that would be the first of many great seasons, not just for those players, but for a lot of players who have had the opportunity to play under Matt's coaching leadership. Four seasons later, I rejoined Matt, this time on the bench as his trainer for a junior Mustangs team with my younger nephew Dylan. And this year, he coached the U16 Purple Mustangs, the second year he's had that group. And while it wasn't a winning season record this year, I know his team still had a lot of fun. And next season, he's moving on to the U14 Purple Mustangs. Trial starts in just a couple weeks. I know everybody says there's two seasons in Canada: construction and hockey, but hockey overlaps with construction all the time, and we're back at the rink in two weeks. But before thinking about that next season, the reason I want to recognise Matt is this year, he surpassed 500 games coached as a head coach. Now, I want you to think about that for a minute. Factor in travel and pre-game warm-ups and strategies with the kids ahead of time. Think about, for every game, you're talking about an hour or two hours of practices during the week. So I did some rough back-of-napkin math, and Matt's contributed over 2,500 hours of his personal time as a non-parent coaching kids in our city, and coaching them not just on how to be better players, but coaching them in life, coaching them to be better people. The thing that comes up about Matt again and again, and his brother-in-law, who was on the bench with him this season, Chad said to me this, and Chad, I know you're here today too, it's not just this season. This has come up again and again and again about Matt for years. It's not just the focus on the ice, it's not just the focus during the game, but it's the focus that Matt continues to have with his players, even after he's done as a coach. He's there to provide support and guidance, volunteer opportunities as players get older, and he goes above and beyond to ensure that these hockey players are becoming mature, responsible members of the community. I know personally from both of my nephews that they always say he was their favourite coach because it's the attention that he pays to the players, not just on the ice, but away from the game as well. I want to take an opportunity to especially thank Brianne and Charlie and Mackenzie for allowing Matt time away from home to coach and to be a part of hockey. I know that that is a sacrifice that you make, and coaches only get to do the things that they do as volunteers in our community with the support of their friends and family. So thank you to you and the rest of the extended family for letting Matt do what he loves at the rink. And I know whether it was for myself, or Andrew and Nathan Angus, or Matt Boss, or any of the people that Matt has shared a bench with, including Chad and Tyler and Rob this season, or the players, and whether it's Ethan or Dylan or Zax of Rozenick or some of the other young men that I know Matt has coached over the years, I think I can speak for all of them in saying, Matt, we appreciate how you have touched so many lives in this community in a positive impactful way as a coach and as a mentor. And so congratulations on 500 games, and when you hit 1,000, we'll have you back for another celebration.
All right, thank you. I'll do the next recognition. So this is an individual that I know everybody in this room knows very well. Steve Cordes, he has decided to retire. And he was first involved as a YOU volunteer in 1984, became the organisation's executive director in 1988. During that time, back in 1988, YOU had 10 staff providing employment programmes and industry free loans for first and last month's rent. Under his leadership, the organisation has grown to 120 people, operating seven facilities with assets of over $50 million. Just a couple of months ago, YOU had its grand opening for Jones Place, a $30 million complex at the corner of Richmond and York that is already transforming lives. This builds on the incredible work that's already been done by YOU, including the opening of our first youth hub. Steve's resignation takes effect on August 15th, and knowing Steve, he'll probably have completed seven more projects between now and then. But I know each of us know him personally. Each of us have seen lives impacted by his work in this community. I know each of us have probably already reached out to him to give that personal congratulations on what has been a life's commitment to serving youth in this community. And we know that despite him being retired, he will still be incredibly involved shaping this community for years to come. So to Steve and everything that he has done for this community on behalf of council, I wanted to say thank you and congratulations on your retirement. And the final recognition, I will turn it over to councillor Caddie to give that one.
Thank you, your worship. As we all know, Pope Francis died yesterday at age 88. And in addition to being an incredibly generous man and great leader of the Catholic Church, I want to tell you a little bit about Francis that you may not know. Pope Francis, you may not already know. He was the first Latin American pope in 1,300 years. He was the first Jesuit priest to ascend to the papacy in 1,300 years. Pope Francis started out as a Jesuit priest on the streets of Buenos Aires, looking after the poor and the downtrodden. And that's the way he lived his life, your worship. He was humble and always giving to the community. Now, I became a Catholic 24 years ago this past weekend. Soon after that, I became a Eucharistic minister at St Peter's Basilica, where I still am today. And Pope Francis gave me a great deal of hope. When my wife passed away in 2015, his words, his wisdom, I followed. But more important, more than that, your worship, Pope Francis was a man who was changing the Catholic Church and changing it for the better. And I want to take a moment, a moment of silence isn't necessary, but I want to take a moment of reflection that we have just seen the passing of probably one of the greatest hopes certainly in our lifetime and maybe for many generations to come. And, your worship, thank you for letting me recognise Pope Francis and for the great work that he's done.
Thank you. I'll also note that the federal government has ordered lowering of the national flags to half-mast for the period beginning today, April 22nd, through the first day of the funeral, Saturday, April 26th. And we recognise all federal flag lowering, so the flags at City of London will also be lowered for that period as well. Okay, that brings us through recognitions. Review of confidential matters to be considered in public, we have none. We have council in closed session. There are three items for our closed session today, so I look for a motion to move into closed session. Moved by councillor McAllister, seconded by councillor Hopkins. Any discussion on closed session? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Councillor Stevenson votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, and we'll be moving to penny room five, colleagues. So those in the gallery can stay. We'll be back when we conclude our in-camera session. Okay, that concludes council in closed session. We have the confirmation and signing of the minutes from previous meetings. We have the sixth meeting, which was held on April 1st, 2025. I'll look for a mover to second it for the minutes of those. Moved by Counselor Van Meerebruggen, seconded by Counselor Ferreira. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, that brings us to communications and petitions. There are a couple of items there that can be referred to the various points in the agenda. There's a motion prepared for that for all of those items, so I'll look for a mover to do that. Moved by Counselor Trosaw, seconded by Counselor Stevenson. Any discussion on those items? Okay, they'll be referred, and we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, there are no motions to which notice was given, which brings us to reports. We have the seventh report of the Infrastructure and Corporate Services Committee. I'll turn it over to Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you, I would like to present the seventh report of the Infrastructure and Corporate Services Committee. I'll look to put items 1 through 10 excluding 9 on the floor.
Okay, would anybody like any else dealt with separately? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Sorry, I'm wrong. One second. Sorry, I'm looking to put items 1 through 8 and exclude 9 and 10 and deal with those separately. Sorry.
Okay. Anything else besides 9 and 10 dealt with separately? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, yes. So I'd like to put 1 through 8 on the floor.
Okay, 1 through 8 is on the floor. Any discussion on 1 through 8? Go ahead, Counselor Ploza.
Thank you. Just a question through you to staff on item 2.6, being the year 2025 tax policy. Just looking through the attached bylaws and the schedules as it relates to this, just wondering, just a general overall comment to be made by staff of why the rate is so high for taxable municipal tax and education tax on the landfill, on the landfill grounds? We're looking at, we'll just call it 3.6. Are these rates just usually set by the government across Ontario, especially for tax rates? Just realizing it's municipally owned property and just wondering how those are set. I can't give you a page number because it's just buried in a bylaw, Schedule A. And I'm fine if staff need time to come back to me.
Is that something you can answer today, or can you get back to the counselor? Go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. McMillan, I believe, is online, so he may have that answer quicker than I can.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, through the mayor. Yes, there are no taxable landfill in the City of London itself. The province has set that rate for some of the other landfills in the province that do contribute to the tax base of certain municipalities. So that is set each year, it changes. It's not like some of the other classes where there's a threshold set and a range of fairness. The province sets what the maximum rate is, and then the recommendation is always to set it at the maximum rate in the event that we do get a private landfill and we are able to apply that rate to it.
Go ahead, Counselor Ploza.
Thank you. Just looking for clarification, that this rate is for, set in the bylaw tax ratios. Should it be a private landfill? Just I hear we don't have a landfill and we do have W-12A. So just, is this rate for W-12A, or is this rate set in our documents? Should a private landfill want to set up operation as set by the province?
Go ahead, Ms. Barbal.
Thank you, through the chair. That would be if there is an additional private landfill that would be open. There are no taxable properties under that class currently in the City of London. W-12A does not fall into that category.
Okay, any other questions on 1 through 8? All right, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Counselor Frank will pronounce, will do the next one.
Okay, Counselor Frank will present the next item. Go ahead.
Thank you, yes. I'm happy to put on the floor the 2026 Municipal and School Board Elections Update item.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look for any discussion. Okay, Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, and I didn't support this at committee, I won't be supporting this here, and my reason for that is I do not support the idea of asking our school boards for a P A day in order to hold an election. I do understand the importance of having election voting booths in schools. I think it's an opportunity for conversations with the school about how to maybe do these differently, but I think asking the school board to allow for a P A day on Election Day doesn't seem like an appropriate ask as education is our first priority. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on this? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and through you, I just want to share, I won't be supporting this for the same reason. It's the P D day request that, to me, I'm not actually convinced that a professional development day does anything to benefit actual voter turnout. Parents have to then deal with childcare arrangements, transportation. Teachers have professional development that they're attending, so they're not necessarily as easily able to vote. I think what we're doing is asking the school board to take on a lot of logistics that I don't feel are going to have a significant impact. I vote at a school location, unless I do what I did in the federal election and voted the advanced polls where I got to vote at East Lyons. Normally, I vote at an elementary school in my ward, too. It hasn't been a problem in all the years I've been voting there, and I don't think that we should be asking the school board to undertake additional logistic challenges for this because I actually think, we live in a society where people's priorities are very different. Their schedules are different, and a P D day is not necessarily going to make it easier for them to vote. It may actually make it harder for some to vote. That's why I'm not supporting this.
Okay, other speakers? And I, oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
I just wanted to say I'm not going to be supporting this either, but I'm wondering if we can pull A?
Yeah, that's what I was just about to say, is, it sounds to me like B is supportive, it's not contingent upon A, so we can vote on A and B separate. Counselor Cuddy, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and I'm in unison. I won't be supporting this either. I thank Counselor Ramon for pulling it. Education is so important to us today. We do have a lot of P D days now, but it's so important that we make sure that we keep kids in classrooms, and I think taking a day off for the election really isn't solving any purpose, so thank you.
Okay, anybody else on this? We're going to vote on A and the rest of it separately. Okay, then we'll put A on the floor first, which is the part directing our staff, and directing our staff to engage with the school board, sorry.
Closing the vote, motion carries 8 to 7.
Okay, and now the rest of the clauses.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, Counselor Ramon will continue presenting the rest of the report.
Thank you, and through you, I'll look to put on the floor item 10, which is the review of the winter maintenance performance regarding snow and ice removal. And this is a letter presented by Counselor Frank, and I close that.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look for any discussion on this. Counselor Trosaw, go ahead.
Thank you very much, through the chair. I've moved a slight amendment to this to add the word "laneways," and that's my amendment. I think this is a very necessary thing. I really applaud the counselors for bringing this out. Received a lot of complaints about it this year, more so than past years. I just think that in some neighborhoods where we're still on a very tight, sort of older grid, laneways are part of this infrastructure, so I wanted to see that word added, and I hope that that will not be controversial. Thank you very much.
Okay, and you're doing that as, what I believe is adding a C. Is that correct? No? How are we doing it? Part B, all right, that's slightly different than your communication. So you're doing that, so you want to move an amendment, which we're going to have to do that formally, to add the word "laneways" in Part B I I I after roads and before sidewalks. Okay, so that's what you want to move? Is there a second or for that? Counselor Hopkins seconds, okay. So that amendment is on the floor, so we're just debating the addition of the word "laneways" in B I I I. That'll get on the screen in a second. Any discussion on that? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, worship, and through you. I'm wondering if staff can share with us what they would define as laneways. I mean, I know we have some laneways in the East End that are not maintained. They're the responsibility of the property owner to maintain behind the houses. Some of them aren't even fully passable. Some of them aren't even fully passable because of encroachments on fences and things like that. So from an operations perspective, how would staff be interpreting laneways?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our intent would be to report back on the status of laneways that are under public maintenance, so unassumed laneways and private laneways would be excluded from that envelope of infrastructure.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. Then I will just say, I'll support the amendment. I'll actually be opposing the main motion, but I think if we're going to go forward, then we should include the laneways piece as well, so I'll support that amendment.
Any other speakers to the amendment? All right, seeing none, we're going to vote on just the amendment which is adding, we'll open that for voting. Okay. Ramon, are you willing to move the as amended motion?
I am, thank you.
Okay, I need a second or for the as amended motion. Counselor Stevenson. All right, so the as amended motion is on the floor. I'll look for a discussion on it. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. So this is where I'm going to say I won't be supporting the whole thing, and for a few very good reasons. First of all, in Clause A, we talk about amendments to the minimum maintenance standards for municipal highways, Oreg 239/02. That's a provincial regulation. And through you, Chair, I'd like to ask staffs clarification. We are performing our road and sidewalk maintenance to the provincial Oreg minimum standards, correct?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we are, where we do not exceed it, so we are either at or above that standard.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So there and for me is the first issue. These are standards set by the province. We can't get them to change those. I mean, we can lobby, we can ask AMO to take a position, we can do those things, but it's an Oreg, and I'm not supporting staff reporting back, taking the time and energy to do up a report on impacts to altering those regulations beyond what we're already doing. Second, the challenge, winter maintenance performance challenges and opportunities be reviewed. I support always performing an asset of contracted service providers, but when we get into things like the cost of potential machines that could clean windrows or ways to clear snow that would minimize the amount of snow at the edge of a residence driveway, that for me, I actually don't need a staff report back on that. I know what it costs Toronto to do a small portion of their city. It's $16 million annually. I know that the windrow clearers slow down operations because the vehicle has to be backed up, then the windrow boot dropped, and then that windrow cleared. So it's not something within zero impact at a time when we're trying to bring the budget down and when we're meeting or exceeding the Oregs already. I'm not going to ask staff to spend time coming up with a report that, quite honestly, I know personally, I'm not going to commit additional funding to because, for me, bringing the budget and the tax increase down is the key focus for this year. So I'm not looking for ways to spend new money by increasing snow plowing on sidewalks and on roadways. I also think that, you know, for me, it's from experience. We changed the sidewalk, we tried going with a different threshold, it changed the complaints by nothing. People still complained, it still wasn't good enough, and we significantly exceeded the provincial Oreg on that. We had a harsh winter, we had some mother nature circumstances where we had freeze thaws that made it seem like even after we had been through, six hours later, it seemed like we hadn't because we had melt and then refreeze. Unfortunately, that's weather in winter in southwestern Ontario. It's something we have always adapted to as residents of the city of London and will continue to do, but I don't think putting more money into this is the solution at a time when we're trying to bring taxes down, and so I don't support asking staff to do the work on something I'll be saying no to in a budget case anyway.
Counselor Frank.
Thank you, and I'm just hoping to clarify some items through you to staff. So for item A, it's my understanding that the province is going to be updating the minimum maintenance standards, Oreg 23902, potentially this year, and so the main motion, or the part of A that's asking for a report back would be required either way because if they change and they amend the minimum maintenance standards, we might have to change our minimum maintenance standards. So that's what at committee we discussed, and having staff report back, that was going to happen, in my understanding, anyway, because there might be amendments that we'd have to do to meet the new provincial standards if they make amendments this year.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The work that is happening with the province with respect to the minimum maintenance standards is somewhat behind schedule. We are not anticipating that that would be complete in time for a report back that would align with the schedule for this report, but yes, we would report back when that information is provided. We largely believe that those changes are focused on the maintenance of cycling facilities and not necessarily on the standards for the plowing of residential roads, sidewalks, laneways, or other paths.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So that clarifies, and again, it's my understanding that if the province changes that regulation, then we also must follow suit as we are governed by the province. So regardless of whether or not A passes, I suppose we'll hear back about that in due course. And then in regards to items under B, there are various items there that, of course, would have possible costs, but, for example, the discussion between school boards on walking path clearance, I don't believe that that would necessarily result in increased costs. It might be a discussion on who maintains it or when does it get maintained. So again, I don't think every single item under part B would require more financial inputs, and therefore, we're just hoping to have a discussion with various partners on that item. Additionally, again, investigating alternatives do not necessarily require more costs, sometimes actually could find cost savings. So I will, of course, still be supporting this, and I don't believe, again, it's better for us to have information ahead of time, and if there are some cost savings, that might be a great opportunity for us to look for savings through this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, and I want to thank the two counselors for bringing this forward. It is a report back. We know the provincial government is going to be reviewing our standards as it is. It's just sort of understanding the process and the changes that we may be making, but for me, I do think it's important that we have some information. We hear from residents on a daily basis, especially throughout the winter, the concerns of snow removal, and I know as a counselor, I would like to be a little bit more informed, especially when it comes to the contracting out. We seem to do quite a bit more contracting out, but also how are we meeting the responsibilities of the subcontractor under our health and safety standards? It's good information to have as a council that we're up to date with everything. I also appreciate investigating alternative options for snow and ice removals, and for me, this also means looking at how much salt we use. We're starting to see a lot more salt use. It is becoming a bigger, broader conversation out there in the community, so I'm just anticipating good information coming back to me, and thank you to the counselors for bringing it forward.
Go ahead, Counselor Trosaw.
Thank you very much. On the main motion through the Chair, I have heard loud and clear from my constituents that they want these matters investigated. They want these matters investigated. The current state of maintenance in the minds of many taxpayers is inadequate, and I've had so many people tell me, they don't mind paying for municipal services, but they want to get value for their money. They want to, they want to, they don't, they don't want to have to go out and redo their driveways because there's been a huge dump, and I at least want to be able to tell people who are persistently complaining about that, that we've looked at the costs and we can or can't do it, and we can't do it because of the budget. We need better information, and the reason we need better information is we're getting these inquiries from our constituents, and I think we all owe our constituents our due diligence to at least look at these issues. There's a lot of really good ideas in this motion, and because some counselors have already decided, before we even get to the Budget Committee on this, that they're not going to support any increases, I think that's not a great way to be making proactive policy. So I really want to urge my colleagues to support this motion, and once again, I want to thank the counselors for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Counselor Privil.
Thank you, and I will be supporting this motion as I was during the meeting. I do want this information to be able to make the best possible decision for half a million of Londoners, and there were, by the way, other initiatives or potential even savings that we were talking about during the meeting, so I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion. I thanked my colleagues for bringing it forward at committee. I know we had an unusual winter, but the complaints that I got from residents really didn't happen until three days after the storm, and particularly B.I., where it talks about a performance assessment of contracted service providers. I'd like to know, you know, if we, how much are we contracting out? If they miss a crescent or a court or certain streets, are there any consequences to that? How are we ensuring that we're getting the contracted services that we expect? And I also got a lot of, you know, very reasonable concerns, I think, about the condition of sidewalks near public elementary schools and on main streets like Oxford where a lot of people rely on public transit and pedestrian walking to get around. So I think this is something that residents, as was stated earlier, garbage and snow removal, these are why people pay their taxes for the most part, and I think it'll be great to have further discussions on this.
Any other speakers? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you. So I just wanted to reiterate my position on this report, that, one, I think it's very helpful, and it's where we should be having these discussions, is at infrastructure and corporate services. So reporting back to the committee to say, how did the winter go and what was our service standard like and what were people experiencing and what were people calling about, and it shows our responsiveness as a government as well to people's concerns. And in my ward, which has a lot of newer subdivisions, an ongoing concern was the performance assessment piece for contracted service providers. So getting a better understanding of what is the baseline service that is provided and being able to point to a report to say, here's what you should be expecting when it comes to contracted service, here's what you can expect for your newly assumed street, for instance, and then I will tell you, I probably had about 30 people share the windrow video with me, and I'm sure other members of council did as well, and staff, and it's not that this is something that, you know, we haven't considered or looked at in the past, but getting an updated idea of cost, I think, would be helpful just in order for me to respond to my residents to say, yeah, I hear you, that this would be a great service, and here's what it would cost, and this is just information for, I think, for us to have, but also for the public to have. With respect to the clearing of pathways, this is something I dealt with as a trustee and now as a counselor, where there's sometimes unclear lines of division between whether or not something is a responsibility of city staff or if it's a school board, also where there are new routes where more students are walking around and through, whether or not there needs to be some evaluative criteria to say this would make sense to clear, whether it's city property or school board property. So always up for those kinds of discussions where we can collaborate more to get more students walking and cycling in the winter to school. And lastly, just again around looking at alternative options. So one of the things that I noted in my subdivisions, we had, you know, these yellow boxes at different spots in the community that were in areas where they're typically slippery when you're walking, and residents didn't know that they could pour, take salt from those boxes and put them on the sidewalk in that area, and so I happened to start talking to staff about it. So, you know, alternates that are there, I think, are helpful only also for the community to know that they exist. So how we communicate those things effectively, I think, can also be helpful. So I just want to be clear that, again, more information is better. We're supposed to be having these discussions at committee, and so this is a way for us to do so.
Okay, I have an ask to separate A and then everything else. I just want to check with our staff, like, A is not tied to anything in B. Is that correct? A was the thing that you said you might report back on anyways if the province made changes, but B is, B is kind of the assessment of our own standards. I just want to confirm that I can do that without any consequences for the work that would be done.
My apologies, I was just pulling this up as I've had a computer reset. No, I don't believe there's any concern there.
Then I'm going to deal with A first and then everything else after that. There are no objections. But first, is there any more debate on any of it? Go ahead, Counselor Van Meere Bergin.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the chief complaints I received this past winter was the state of icy sidewalks, hugely dangerous. Quite often, they're just very sleet, very slippery, and I'm being asked by constituents, you know, why can't the city use more salt to melt this? Salt is cheap, it's plentiful, let's not be afraid of salt, let's use more of it. It's a heck of a lot better than having Londoners break bones or worse, and I think when we get this report back, it should focus particularly on the sidewalks, how we can use something like salt, which is very efficient at keeping the sidewalk safer.
Any other discussion? Okay, so what we're going to do first is the A and the if being noted together, and then we'll do the rest of it after. So I'll open A and the if being noted for voting. Okay, and now everything else, including all of B. And we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 3.
Go ahead.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. That is on to Community and Protective Services Committee. Turn it over to Chair Ferreira to present the report.
Thank you, Mayor. Pleased to present the seventh report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. I got a poll request for item 8, that's 2.7, the Emergency Treatment Fund ETF approval, a federal contribution agreement, reducing substances use harms through basic needs and healthcare at 602 Queens, the Commons, and another poll request, actually my own, for item 9, 5.1, Watson Park. So if there is no other poll requests, I'd be pleased to put 1 through 7 on the floor.
Okay, so 1 through 7, would anybody like any of those dealt with separately? Okay, you can move those together.
I'll move those.
Okay, that's moved. But discussion on items 1 through 7. Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I can put item 8, that's 2.7, the Emergency Treatment Fund approvals, a federal contribution with the 602 Queens, the Commons on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look for any speakers on that one. Go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. As at committee, I won't be supporting this. Of the 444,000, we've got 217,000 for staff wages and 92,000 for phones, iPads, computers, and a program van. So I hear from residents So I hear from residents all the time, like, so much money is going to wages, and computers, and rent, and that kind of thing. And at the end of the 12 months, we have a program that doesn't want to be shut down, that doesn't have funding anymore. And how has it really helped? How many people have had indoor, someplace indoors to sleep at night? How many have, you know, hope that there'll be more housing for them at the end of the 12 months? So I understand that it's not municipal tax dollars, but I think we need to start expecting outcomes for the people who need it most, who are living unsheltered right now.
Okay. Sorry, I know some people are probably new here. So the decorum in the audience isn't, there's no clapping, there's also no booing, you might like what some people say, you might dislike what others say. There's people in the gallery who may feel differently, and we want everybody to feel comfortable here. So although I'm sure those who you support are appreciative of that support, it's not something that we do during a council meeting. So I'll just provide that as a general overview. I should have outlined that at the start of the meeting. I'll look for other speakers on this item. Okay, go ahead councillor Ferreira.
Thank you, mayor. So I will be supporting the committee recommendation, because we need a continuation of services. These services provide wraparound supports, they provide early interventions, and yes, we need housing, and we need to bring people in. But if we don't have that initial contact with individuals to bring them, bring people into housing, then we're kind of reducing our capacity to do that. It's not just about housing, it's also about making those connections and bringing people indoors. Without those connections, we can have the indoors, but how are we supposed to make the connection between the two? So we also, also, we talk about, you know, getting federal support, or provincial support, or any type of funding from another level of government. We have that here. This is not going to be put on the property tax base. And this is something that we should, we should use. We should use those dollars that have been handed down to us, because this is what we're calling for all the time. So with that, I would also point out that there's many services that are going to this location. We have the Thames Valley Health Team is there, Sisters St Joseph's works there, London Cares, Ontario Work Staff is also there. This is critical care that we need to bring for individuals. So we need to ensure that we have those connections. So we need, we need this money. We need to ensure that this is a continued service. Because without the continued service, we'll lose that connection. And I am not here to dismantle any more of our capacity. We need to ensure that we have that capacity. So I'm going to be supporting the committee recommendation.
Thank you councillor. Other speakers? Go ahead councillor Frank.
Thank you. I was hoping to just ask a quick question through you to staff. I am just wondering, given the funding, what the plan is and the metrics are for how many people would be assisted? I heard some questions regarding, you know, if we're giving this money, how many people will be assisted? So I'm just wondering if there's any numbers, like daily or weekly, how many people who are living unsheltered would receive assistance through this funding?
Go ahead, Mr Dickens.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. In the application, it states an estimated 1,000 individuals will be assisted through this service. The London Care space typically operates around three cohorts of 30 individuals a day, so roughly 90 to 100 people per day. Five days a week is about 500 individuals a week that would access this service. Again, noting they're able to bring in additional services that leverage this funding, such as the Thames Valley Family Health Team, who have access to clinical practitioners as well. The space at 602 Queens Ave is also operating a Narcotics Anonymous program, which helps people get access to some social supports, some pathways and referrals to recovery programs. And from that space, as we do with London Cares and other avenues, assist outreach workers to help people find housing, either be it through the House of Hope or other housing placements throughout the city.
Go ahead councillor.
Thank you. Given that information, that does sound like really good ROI to me, especially if it's federal funding, so I'll be supporting this.
Okay, other speakers to this. All right, seeing none, we'll open this for voting. Go ahead Chair.
Thank you, mayor. For the last item, I was on the opposing vote for a portion of that, for the seizing of operations for Watson Park. That was a 3 to 2 vote, so I'd like to hand it over to my vice chair to bring that recommendation from committee.
I'll turn it over to the vice chair to present item 9.
Okay, I'm putting forward item 9, which is 5.1 Watson Park, on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look for speakers for that. And councillor McAllister, go ahead.
Thank you, just one moment, I did write down my thoughts for this. I will start with comment, then I have a question for staff, and then based on that, if I need to make any further amendments to clarify, I will. So thank you, and through the mayor, first want to begin by clarifying what my intentions are for this motion. I fully recognize that we have encampments throughout the city and there are ongoing capacity issues with our shelter system. With that in mind, I explicitly ask staff to check with service providers to see if there are any, that there are currently any shelter spaces available, noting that 18 spaces were just recently freed up at the Centre of Hope. If shelter is not available, I still request that those living unsheltered be engaged to see if there are service supports that they may require. Where I think the confusion has arisen is around the distinction between the depot and the encampment. The depot provided static services, which has operated for approximately two years, and was slated to close by the end of the month, regardless of what decision we make today. I am asking for that closure to be moved up by a week, to allow any remaining resources to be reallocated, to assist those living unhoused, to find shelter, or help with relocation as we transition to the new service model. When I am talking explicitly about relocation, it is in the context of the encampment itself, which is the tents and the structures that have been erected in the park, which is adjacent to the service depot. I am asking that the encampment protocols that we as a council have already passed be enforced. There have been clear violations of those protocols, and we need to bring Watson Park back into compliance in the interest of public safety. There has been a proliferation of tents and structures well in excess of what we currently allow, and the recent fires raised serious questions about the level of fire safety being exercised in the encampment itself. The explosion of the propane tank at the encampment a few weeks ago was a serious incident, and we cannot ignore it. I am asking for your support to cease the operation of the depot immediately, move to the mobile model as quickly as possible, connect with those living unhoused with shelter services, and bring Watson Park back into, into compliance with our encampment protocols. With all that said, so my question to staff is, is that clear? Or would you like me to make changes to clarify the position? I would imagine if you need clarification in terms of the compliance issues, that B would probably be appropriate for changes, but looking to staff to see if they understand my intention.
Yeah, so this happens from time to time. The councillors moved a motion through committee, the committee supported it. I think there's some confusion in the way that it's been reported in the media and to the public about what is actually going to be operationalized with the current wording of the motion. So councillor's given some of his intent, and I guess I'll go to staff to find out, what are you, how is this actually operationalized? Is it, as the councillor kind of described and intended there, which would not be like a complete closure of the encampment there, but an enforcement of the current encampment protocols, including size and safety and other procedures? So if our staff could articulate that, so we know if we pass this, what you would actually be doing, I think that would help clarify if any adjustments need to be made to the motion.
Through you, your worship, thank you. This does provide some clarity in terms of the intent. I think we will still encounter some ambiguity in the operations. The team has been out doing cleanups in Watson Park. We have been, as part of the cleanup from the incident, uncovering propane tanks that were hidden inside tents, and so council's clear on this. We do not send city staff inside people's tents to inspect for belongings. We did uncover some of that as part of the cleanup efforts. Those propane tanks and other items have been removed. Where there is some greater fortification happening, outreach teams have been working with those individuals. Some asp areas of the park have already been cleared out as a result of the fire that was referenced. The team is, is working on those compliance matters where identified. It is a very large space, although there are a number of encampments, we're not seeing six tents per encampment, we're seeing them spaced out. So for clarity's sake, it, we would be moving to, to end the physical depot site that is there. If it were to be a week early, we'll move as fast as we can. The mobile efforts, though, that were approved by council are for outreach teams to go out to where people are at. So if we're removing some individuals from Watson, but not all individuals from Watson, and others are remaining, outreach workers will know that they're there, and they will go out to engage with them as they do now, to check on their wellbeing, to support them, to also provide some, perhaps meals and water, and then try to, to work with them on other options. Yes, we've engaged shelter providers to try to find additional space and accommodations. The 18 rooms that were approved by council were for females at Salvation Army, they've worked to, to start to maximize and fill up all of those rooms as well. So from a clarity perspective, in theory, it makes sense, try to restore some manner of order or control in that space, perhaps reduce the size. We do know, though, if it's not a restricted space, that other people will eventually migrate there, and we'll address that problem as need be.
councillor McAllister.
Thank you. So just to ensure there is no ambiguity, so I will amend B, to end with it saying, to ensure that Watson Park is in compliance with encampment protocols.
Okay, just give me a second here. Councillor, I know you suggested B. The kind of, the thought is, given the ambiguity kind of lands in A about the relocation and what that means for the actual space, is that maybe at the end of A, to add the, add the following. So it would, it would read now, civic administration be directed to assist with the relocation of those living on House of Watson Park, to ensure that Watson Park is in compliance with the established encampment protocols, and connect them with appropriate service supports, including possible shelter options. So it would recognize that it would be the encampment protocols that would be enforced as connected with any sort of, any sort of relocation of individuals. I don't know if that makes sense to our staff, given the intent, but if it makes sense to the councillor, makes sense to the staff, it might make more sense in A, in that way, to achieve what you're trying to do. Mr Dickens, is that, yeah, okay. So you're good with that? Okay, so there's a second for, for that then. Councillor Ferreira. Okay, so we're now just going to be on the amendment. It's, you're going to see A be amended to read that. We're only debating the amendment, which is adding that clarification about encampment protocols. If you've got some general comments on the whole thing, I'd suggest you can deal with that after the amendment is over. Go ahead councillor McAllister on the amendment.
Thank you, and through the mayor, I do feel it's appropriate to add this clarity. I'll be honest, that, we need to enforce the rules around the books. The number one complaint I hear all the time is, you know, we have to have rules in place. And we do have rules in place. And so what I am asking essentially is that we stick to the encampment protocols that we have already agreed upon. I would say, from what I have witnessed, the structures being erected, and some of the activities, we need to keep eyes on Watson Park. We need to ensure that the rules are being followed. Just because you are living on public land does not mean that it's free rein. We have got to ensure that there are rules in place for not only those living in the encampment, but those adjacent to it. We owe it to all the citizens of London to ensure that the rules are followed. Thank you.
Okay, other speakers to this. Move the second on the amendment. Councillor Trosseau.
Through the Chair, I thought we did a good job at committee fixing up part A, which I think as it was originally submitted, had a lot of problems with it. I don't think it was compliant with our Waterloo obligations. You know, when we say things like, ensure that we're in compliance, well, we have to be in compliance, we don't just pick and choose which parts of the law we want to be, we don't just pick and choose which parts of the law we want to be in compliance with. We have to be in compliance with all of the parts of the law. That includes applicable case law, which has been circulated to this council on many occasions, including on the, in the June 24 report. We have to be in compliance with our human rights obligations, which by the way, exist as a matter of federal and international law, and are not within the ability of this council to change, because it's not convenient. We have to comply with all of the law. And I guess, I guess my question is, if we just focus on the encampment protocols, and it results in people being moved, and staff can answer this, or the proponent can answer this, where do they go?
So, Mr, yes, it is, Mr Dickens, when the encampment protocols are enforced, can you describe what happens from where people go, where people go perspective?
Through you, your worship, it varies depending on the, the space in which they're being relocated from. Sometimes people will move to within close proximity of where they were previously located, perhaps to higher ground, or to a space that is maybe not involved in a construction area. Sometimes outreach workers are quite successful in getting people indoors, even if it's temporarily, so one night, or a week at a time, staying in shelter. We work with folks all the time to try to get them ready for housing, and try to match people to housing. In fact, we do have people move straight from encampments into housing, and often housing with supports. That's not always the case when you have nearly a 0% vacancy rate, and rising costs of affordable housing. In most cases, people are just moved, and they need to relocate elsewhere. Often that means they move further away from where services might be, or they move to more remote locations where perhaps there's a perception that they'll be left alone if, if it's harder to find them.
Councillor Trosseau.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And as I understand, the answer is, we're not really sure, it could come out a couple of different ways, but they're going to have to move, and hopefully it'll turn out well. And I think the problem with that approach, unless we're really sure what we're doing, we might be making a bad problem worse. We might be putting people who are in danger in greater danger. We may be subjecting more of our adjacent neighborhoods to the types of complaints that I'm sure we all get, in terms of people prowling around and, and looking for things. So I think this is a bad idea. I'm going to be voting against the amendment to part A. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to vote against B if it's still, if it's still there on the table, as I did at committee. We have to comply with all of our obligations, we cannot pick them and choose them. And I think the main rule that we should be following, just from a common sense point of view, is let's not do more harm. Nobody is in favor of retaining these encampments. And we are not going to eradicate the problem that encampments create, simply by moving them around like it's a game of whack the mole. So I am voting no on this. My, my, my position is exactly the same as it was at committee, and I think... My, my, my position is exactly the same as it was at committee, and, um, I think, uh, that's what I have to say, so thank you very much.
Okay, so, as I described before, uh, there's no clapping or any negative sounds as well. Um, everybody will have a chance to speak. Yes, so you don't, so, man, listen, I, you don't get to speak during the meeting, and if you don't follow the rules of decorum, I will end up having to have you removed from the council chambers, which I absolutely do not want to do. And if I'm forced to clear the chambers, you will not be allowed back again. So what we would like to do is have you sit down, let us continue the meeting, and you'll continue to be able to listen, if that would be preferred. That's, that's okay. We're not gonna have people, those, speak out anymore. I'm gonna consider that, I'm gonna consider that a warning. No one else, don't speak out, because I want you to be able to stay and listen to the meeting. So we are fine here, and people can stay, and people will be quiet and listen to the debate. Yes, you're not allowed to say anything. It's not a public participation meeting. If, if you disrupt the meeting, for anybody in the gallery or anybody doing the work down here, I have to have you removed from the chambers, and I do not, I do not want to have to do that. So don't make me move down that path of the procedure bylaw, please. Okay, we're gonna continue with debate, I'm gonna ask the gallery to be quiet. Thank you. Uh, next speaker. Uh, oh, uh, I don't have a next speaker, I'm looking for speakers. Counselor Ferreira, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some points of clarification. So I hear what the last two speakers said. Um, I, I agree on most of the points that I heard. Are, this is just an amendment to item A. We're still having item B, uh, come as well, like, uh, just, just to clarify, we're still having the full motion, just as, this is the only amendment for item A.
We're on just the amendment. Just the amendment, that's it.
Okay, uh, so I seconded this motion because I do see that, um, um, the established encampment protocols are for safety, for community safety within the encampment and surrounding encampment, so that's why I'd be supportive of this. Like I said, item B is what I'm not supportive of, so, um, so long as we can break out the votes, I guess, um, I'll be in support of this, and then I'd like to break out the votes for item B to be separate.
How do you, sorry, Counselor, how do you want that divided up? We're just...
I'd like item B voted on separately. I'm okay with item A.
Okay, so that's now what we're on now. Um, you can make that request when we get through the amendment. The amendment is just amending A with some additional language, the amendment that you seconded, okay?
I can do that, thank you.
All right, perfect. You wanted to separate it, we'll, we'll do the debate first, and then we'll separate them at the end. Other speakers? Go ahead, Counselor Ramon.
Uh, thank you, and through you, um, I do have some questions. I'm not sure if, uh, these are questions that can be answered in pertaining to the direction that's here, but, um, my council colleague just referenced the legal precedents from, that was shared with us when we were determining the encampment protocols, uh, last year, and my understanding is that there's been a subsequent ruling since that time, I believe December twenty-third of twenty-twenty-four, a decision by Justice Ramsey on the same issue. And basically, my understanding of the interpretation of that is that, uh, the city of Hamilton at the time, which was part of the original case law, was then, um, in this decision, uh, it was seen as though the city acted, uh, and, and should be able to act without interference. And so I'm wondering how that then impacts our decision-making, and I'm kind of wondering this out loud, um, not really directing it to staff at this point, but, um, how that, that impacts our decisions around encampment protocols. Um, my understanding of what the counselor has put forward is around safety measurements, and that we did say, look, we have an obligation, it is to uphold human rights, yes, but it's also to ensure that we are enacting, uh, in reasonably, uh, a, a method to move forward with, uh, an area that is also to be considered from a health and safety perspective, uh, part of our obligation as well. Um, my understanding of reading our parks bylaws as well, which, although we have encampment safety protocols, I'm not sure which one trumps which at this point, but, um, I personally believe that we have a responsibility when it comes to health and safety. And so we have to manage that obligation with our obligation to be able to provide supports where possible, and for that reason, I'll support the amendment that's brought forward by the counselor. I know that it was well thought through. Um, I know that it is in consultation with, uh, those impacted, um, in the area, as well as those impacted, um, by, by the, the amount of tents that are there right now. Um, this is an unfortunate situation. It's one where, uh, you know, we have an obligation as a council to consider what are the best, uh, practices and, and, and policies as we move forward, and these are difficult decisions to make. Um, I want to thank staff, because I know that the fire and, uh, the incident that took place, there was a lot of, um, uh, responsibilities for staff to be involved as well, and I know that they acted, our, our firefighters, I want to thank them, our first responders for their work as well. Um, we don't want to put anyone's in harm, in, anyone in harm's way, and so until we have adequate shelter, we have to find a way forward, and it's not in, um, o- opposition to the community. We want to be supportive of the community with the limited resources that we have. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor. Other speakers to the amendment. Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering if I can ask through you to staff what, uh, the value is in this amendment as far as they're concerned? Does it give the clarity that we were looking for? Because this motion has brought a lot of angst, um, and so I'm just wondering, when we say to ensure that Watson Park is in compliance with the established encampment protocols, I'm assuming the established encampment protocols are always being sought to being followed, so I'm just wondering what this is gonna do? And also, I, this might sound picky, but there's a comma between Watson Park and to ensure, which makes it sound like it's to assist with the relocation of those living unhoused in Watson Park, comma, to ensure that the Watson Park is in compliance? And I'm wondering if we took the comma out, are we only assisting with relocation to ensure compliance, or are they a series of things, that we're looking for relocation and compliance?
So, um, Counselor, I, I pause your time, uh, because this comes up at council from time to time. We will get into some wordsmithing, or even commas, or certain words, because we're trying to be clear about our intent. What absolutely matters is how staff is interpreting the operat- operationalization of the motion on the floor, so I think your, your inquiry is good. Um, so I think Mr. Dickens, uh, and his team clearly heard what the counselor was trying to achieve with the intent, and that was not to relocate all of the individuals in Watson Park, uh, but to ensure that the encampment protocol is followed, which can, under those protocols, lead to people having to be moved, people having to find other spaces, whether that's for safety, or size of the encampment, or proximity to, uh, housing as, as per the encampment protocol. So, um, I, I understand your concern about the way that it reads. What I want to do is go to Mr. Dickens to ensure that we are absolutely clear on how this would be operationalized, so that there is no misinterpretation about council's intent here. Uh, and if we need to adjust the motion, I would ask Mr. Dickens to let us know, um, because you can put on public record what your operationalization is. I know you said there was some, uh, uh, some, there's always some discretion in this, but, but from your understanding of the motion, I want to hear how you'd operationalize it so that the counselor has clarity, and all of, all of council, and those who are listening in the gallery do too.
Uh, through you, your worship, um, there, this does give us, uh, more clarity. Um, as mentioned, uh, teams are constantly trying to assist with the relocation of those living unsheltered, so that goes without saying. Uh, specific to Watson Park, we will continue to try to assist those, uh, that are in that space to relocate to, uh, some form of indoor shelter, be it housing or shelter or other types of, uh, accommodations. Uh, we take this direction as it's all-encompassing. So some, uh, the, the priority will be to ensure that we are, uh, compliant with our established encampment protocols, uh, which include everything from open fires, human trafficking, violence, uh, through to distances and the proximities that council has set. Uh, we understand a hundred meters from a private property line would be, uh, required to be enforced. So what this motion does is it takes away the discretion that the teams have been using up until this point, uh, and we would, uh, strictly stick to the encampment protocols, which include the proximity and distances, as well as some of the health and safety measures, uh, and we would use that consistently at Watson Park. As people relocate or move out of Watson Park, either in violation of the safety protocols or proximity measures, uh, we understand they may relocate back to Watson Park, at which point we would, uh, continue to do our work, uh, in a different way.
Counselor Stevenson.
It's a difficult spot we find ourselves in, um, because we have just funded three million dollars in outreach to encampments, and we didn't specify where, you know, clear is kind. I think people knowing and understanding what the rules are and where they're allowed to be is compassionate as well, right? So I struggle with these. Um, I also struggle with the fact that, uh, the established encampment protocols are difficult to find. I was just doing up an email, but maybe through you to staff, um, on the London website, the link to the encampment plan is broken, and on the Get Involved, it only talks about hubs and highly supportive housing, the encampment section is gone. So as we fund three million dollars in outreach, and we're, we have so many people living unhoused, having that, that handy and easy to find on our website would be great. Is a motion required, or is that something that can just be done?
No, there, if there's a broken link, our staff will attempt to fix, fix the link on.
The broken link I get, but there's also on the Get Involved site, that entire section on encampments is gone. It only talks about hubs.
Okay, that, that doesn't have much to do with the amendment here, so...
Well, it does when we talk about established encampment protocols, but the public can't see them.
Right.
Public unhoused or housed.
Okay, so you said the link was broken to the encampment protocols, we can fix that.
That one's easy, but the Get Involved site, it has hubs and highly supportive housing, and there's nothing around our encampment.
So you'd like to add a different section to Get Involved for encampments?
Yeah, I just wondered whether we need a motion, or whether that's something that's being worked on already?
I, I don't know if that's being worked on. I don't know if that motion is part of this, is, I mean, we can fix the link, but I'll ask Mr. Dickens if there's any updates to...
Uh, through you, your worship, we can work with the, um, uh, ITS and with our communications department and have the, um, the encampment plan added. Um, it was not in, uh, there was a council-endorsed version, so we'll make sure we're consistent with, uh, posting any council-endorsed documents.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, I do understand the confusion. We approved part of it, and then we kept deferring another part of it, so, um, but it used to be there, and now there is nothing, and as I said, we just massively funded it, and we've got a motion before us like this, so I appreciate it.
Okay, other speakers to just the amendment. Just Counselor McAllister's amendment to add some clarity to part A. Okay, we're gonna open that for voting. The vote, so I'm gonna ask the gallery to, 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 to not interject, but I will say, when the votes are complete, they go up on the screen, so people will be able to see the votes on the screen. Yes, Counselor Flosa?
Just procedurally amended, we will have the chance to vote on A as amended, and then B as well, that we don't accidentally finalize A if this passes.
We'll separate them at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Right, this is the amendment to A, but we can vote on the final version of A, the final version of B, we can divide it up.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
Okay, so as, you're willing to vote the as amended motion, Counselor McAllister? I need a second for the as amended motion. Deputy Mayor Lewis is willing to second. Okay, so this is debate on the as amended motion. I'll look for speakers on the as amended motion. This is everything with the adjustment that was made by the amendment. All right, Counselor Trosaw, go ahead.
Well, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I'm just gonna be very, very brief and say I will, I will not be supporting this. Actually, I think what came out of the committee was, had more clarity than this. I don't think this clarified anything. Now we have some confusion raised on the floor about what the relationship between the Hamilton and the Waterloo decision is. Part of me wants to ask to go into closed session to get that clarified, but, um, I guess it's a question of interpretation. My, 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 my understanding of the situation is the Waterloo case is still good and operative law, and the Hamilton case can most certainly be distinguished on its facts, and, uh, you don't have one superseding, um, the other. Also, the Hamilton case is under repeal, um, and if I'm, if I'm wrong about anything, I can be corrected, but let's, let's not create this element of confusion in terms of the continued validity and vitality of the Waterloo decision, because that decision came down, and the city, in its wisdom, the, the region, decided not to appeal it. They decided to comply with it. Uh, we have a very, very different situation in Hamilton. So I, I think what we're doing today undoes some of the useful work that we did at committee. I'll be voting no on the entire motion, and I guess, I guess before I sit down, I would like to make a point of personal privilege, if I, if I may, and that is...
Okay, so you're speaking, but you're making a point of personal privilege in the middle of your speech, Counselor?
Yes, because it's something that happened outside of chambers. Let me just say what it is, and you can decide if it's okay. Otherwise, I'll just use the rest of my time.
Yes, Counselor, so a point of personal privilege is part of the procedure bylaw, which is the governance of the meeting, so something can happen outside of council chambers, it didn't happen here, so I'm gonna, gonna suggest that that's probably, there's probably other avenues to address that.
Okay, so my avenue, uh, how much time do I have left?
You got about, uh, you've used about one thirty so far.
Okay, so look, folks, it's real clear that this council is not unanimous on these matters, and I think that's okay, because I think, uh, it's, it's often the case when we have, uh, vibrant debates, we move closer to, uh, not a consensus, because I don't think we're gonna have a consensus, but I think we move closer to a, um, usable set of policies. And one thing's clear, the decision at the committee was not unanimous. There was a very clear three to two vote on that. So I was, I was a little surprised and quite disturbed when I saw, when, when I saw representation made by a counselor on social media that the, um, that the matter was unanimous, because it wasn't unanimous. We're not unanimous on this, folks. So in, in closing, I, I really, I really hope that people don't use their social media accounts to promote misinformation. And...
I'm just gonna caution the counselor, like, I think reflecting the committee vote that it came through committee is fine, um, I'm, we're not going to assume that someone is trying to create misinformation, they must, people can post things that maybe aren't, aren't accurate, or maybe they got it wrong, but we're not gonna assume, uh, malintent.
Fair, fair, fair enough, and I didn't, I didn't really go to intent, I went to the effect of, of a statement that was made online saying this was unanimous when it clearly wasn't. And by the way, um, if people have difficulty reading the, the reports, it's always, it's always, uh, okay to go to the city clerk and ask for some, uh, uh, a- assistance in terms of what a report meant. So in closing, I'm gonna vote no on this. Uh, as a whole, I'll, I'll, I'll encourage everybody to vote against it. I want to be clear that my vote against this is not, it is most certainly not, an endorsement of the continuation of the status quo, which I think we can all agree is, uh, is, is, is not good. And it's not an endorsement of the idea of having encampments as a viable solution to our homeless problem. It's not. And I know, I, I, well, I shouldn't suppose what people are gonna say, but I just, I just hope that my words are not taken out of context. I, I, I hope that, um, what people take away from this, um, meeting today is that, uh, that there are a lot of different thoughtful positions on this council. I think, uh, most of the people on council want to grapple with this difficult issue in good faith, but I think we have to be careful not to get too far ahead of ourselves and to start having contradictory statements where one piece of the law is not in compliance with another piece. And I think that we don't really have the information at the table today that I would have liked to have had, to have, to have that clearer. So again, I'll be voting no. So again, I'll be voting no, and I will hope that my colleagues will join me in voting no on this. Thank, thank you very much.
Counselor Ploza, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask a couple of things. One, that the current wording that we're discussing could be put on the screen for our guests in the gallery could see it and those online, realizing it's been amended. Two, that when we get to voting, that we call the parts separate as well. Thirdly, a question, a couple of questions through you to staff. First question is, question is that we have a Watson Park depot, and it's looking at transitioning to mobile service options, looking to see if either of these options include any access to washroom facilities in the area, as the city's website does not list Watson Park at any point in it of having city available facilities.
Mr. Dickens, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, your worship. Currently, the depot provides access to a portable washroom. When that depot service ends, the washroom will be removed.
No way. It's a basic human right.
Okay, so I, unfortunately, I, listen, I, listen, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you to, I'm going to ask you to stop crying. Just, listen, I'm going to be clear. When we are, okay, I'm going to have to ask you to leave the council chambers. If you, listen to me, so you know, I'm going to have to ask you to leave the council chambers if you don't stop now, okay? Stop now. Okay, you're going to have to, I am going to have to ask you.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to our friends in the gallery, I don't want you to have to leave for the conversation, and that's what's going to happen. So we just need you to stay tight, we can work our way through this.
I'm, this is, I'm going to, thank you, Counselor, for your point of order. Listen, I want nobody to speak for a minute. I'm going to be very clear. Under our procedure bylaw, you're not allowed to have an outburst. If you do, I'm required to ask the people who do repeated outbursts to leave the council chambers. If you force me because you disrupt so long that I have to clear the council chambers, you will not be allowed to come back for a period of time, and I do not, nor does any member of council want that to happen. So when I ask you to not talk, it is because we are trying to allow you to listen to the meeting, whether you agree or disagree with what's being said. It is our desire to that. So no more outbursts. I, you're, listen, you're not listening. You're, unfortunately, I'm going to have to ask you to leave, okay? I'm sorry. You need to leave the council chambers. I've asked you multiple times, and I'm going to have to ask our staff to escort you out. I'm sorry, but you've had repeated warnings. I'll tell you, the reason why I'm not clearing the council chambers because of disruption is she will not be allowed back for a period of time. So I'm asking you kindly to leave for a period of time, because I want you to be able to come back at a future discussion or debate and listen. I'm asking you kindly, please, listen to the ruling, so that we don't have to bar you from council chambers for a period of time after this. And for anybody else talking, I would really like you to be able to stay under our procedure bylaw, so please, no more outbursts, or I will have to ask other people to leave. We are in the middle of a debate, you're disrupting that debate. You don't get to be part of the debate. You don't, you don't get to be part of the debate. I'm very close to clearing the council chambers, and I don't want to do that, because you will not be allowed to come back. Because I need, I've asked you multiple times to not speak, and you've broken the procedure bylaw, unfortunately, and I have to enforce the procedure bylaw, which is the rules to which this democratic institution governs and all counselors have agreed to. And that includes counselors who speak on the side, they have to respect the procedure bylaws as well. My job as chair is to enforce them. I've asked you to leave for a period of time. You will be welcome back at future meetings if you leave now. If you don't, there will be further consequences, and I don't want to have to do that. You will not be allowed back into chambers for a period of time for not complying with the direction to leave. Okay, you don't get to stay, you will. Okay, now, then, I'm, I'm going to ask for a recess. Yes, Counselor, personal privilege, Counselor Ploza.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, recognizing the guests who have come with us today are not used to City Hall or our procedures, hoping that maybe the, I don't know, I hate to call it mercy or an exception, but that they could be explained, that it's not public participation meeting, it's observing only, realizing we would like the majority of the gallery to stay put as long as possible. I'm sorry.
I tried, Counselor, and we passed that point. I tried very, very hard to give people an opportunity. I'm going to look for a five-minute recess, at least, and then we'll, Counselor Farrar, five-minute recess, Counselor Hillier, all those in favor of a five-minute recess, opposed? Okay, please be seated, thank you. Okay, I'm going to make some comments, I'm going to go back to Counselor Ploza, who, I don't, I think you got about four minutes and 10 seconds left, Counselor. So I appreciate the recess. I just want to let you know, I went inside, I spoke to the group who, the one woman who I asked to be removed, I spoke with her directly, and the other group, explained to them the rules of decorum. I've indicated that she is not allowed back, she's accepting of that, she understands that she did not comply, and everyone else is allowed to return, and they have a clear understanding about the rules of engagement and the decorum within the council chambers, and they're So it ended in a hug, so it was kind of a nice thing, but we will continue to enforce the rules here, and I will try to be as clear as possible with people about the rules. Okay, so return to Counselor Plosa's comments, and you've got about four minutes left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to highlight too that just, I guess part of the question is how we got here realizing this was an emergent motion at committee, so they didn't have opportunities to comment at committee, and the regular council agenda was issued and due to the holiday season that there was no opportunity for anyone to submit comments because the added deadline was on the same day that the council agenda came out. That's a procedural issue on our side that we'll have to clean up in order to make sure that there's a clear line of communication to help address some of the concerns, which also tie into the washroom questions I was currently in, just looking to Mr. Dickens or his team on that question of if there'll be no washrooms available in the mobile service model versus the depot service of just where the closest washrooms are for residents to access.
Mr. Dickens or Mr. Cooper? Go ahead.
Sorry, that's me again hogging the mic.
Thank you through your worship, just a quick search of the city's website, it appears that there's a washroom available at Meredith Park just north of the river, appreciating that, I don't believe these are open until May 1st, we'd have to confirm with Parks and Rec, and then to the east there's a washroom available at Vauxhall Park, and to the west at Thames Park.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, realizing the whole motion is on the floor, just looking that we don't end the services earlier than anticipated, realizing the city park washrooms aren't open yet, so there actually wouldn't be those hours and staff in place to offer alternates, realizing we would like to ensure that people have an opportunity to use the facilities and not defecate on city property and parks, so not able to support that. And I believe that staff and fire were already enforcing some degree of safety measures in the parks, and even if we passed this, staff still would not be entering people's tents to search them, just looking for clarification.
Mr. Dickens, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, that is correct, we would not be entering into people's locations, we would certainly through the assistance of outreach organizations, a lot of observations are made on a daily basis, we'd be looking for items that might indicate it's an unsafe situation, or keep an eye for those things. And as for the washrooms, we do have a previous council approval from a basic outdoor needs provision report where we identified that we would be placing some portable washrooms throughout the city to not concentrate them in one fixed location for long periods of time. The number of those portable washrooms during the months in which the Parks and Forestry teams have the city-owned washrooms open would be few, and as the winter months come we would add more portable washrooms, but again decentralized and not concentrated in one area for too long.
Go ahead.
Thank you, and my last question three to staff is should we make the decision to stop the service depot model preemptively and then switch to mobile? Is there any contracts that would be issued to service providers that we'd still be financially paying for if we stopped the depot locations early?
Thank you through you, your worship, no signed contracts with outreach agencies would be impacted with that change, it is really more the focus on meal provision and the comfort stations or the washrooms that would likely be removed, and the meals not provided onsite for eight, nine days or so.
Thank you, and just for the clerk and for colleagues, I will be still with you, I just need to go to a child's urgent medical appointment, but still with you, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other speakers to this. Go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you, like I said earlier and on social media, to which there was a five to zero vote on part A and a three-two on part B, so I was only speaking to part A, which was unanimous.
There's no, there's Counselors, not you, Counselor Stevenson, but I got to call out the side conversations with Counselors, when a Counselor is speaking, we do not make side conversations to disrupt the flow of that Counselor's points whether you agree with them or not, because every Counselor gets to stand up and speak, I've already had a discussion with those in our gallery, same rules apply for us here around the horseshoe. So if a Counselor is speaking, do not make side conversation, do not make comments based on what the Counselor is saying, allow them to speak, listen, if you have other points you'd like to make, you can do those during your turn to talk in the debate. Sorry for the disruption, continue on, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and like I said, my social media post was about the relocating, and it was a five-zero vote at committee. So the struggle that I have with all of this is, like I said, clear is kind, and I don't think it's clear, people don't know where to go, and it matters, you know, I had people reaching out to me after committee very concerned about the media saying that they were going to be clearing that encampment, and I was at that committee meeting, it's not what I understood, I reassured them that it was going to be fine. Then I sought clarity and I found out, no, it was going to be cleared if we pass this. I sought more clarity and then found out, no, it wasn't the intention. This happens, I get it, and I'm glad we're seeking clarity now and the Counselor's done that and we're going to support it, but the truth is, it's still not clear. You know, we found out the washroom's going to be removed, that no meals for the next eight, nine days, these things matter to the people who are living there, and I just feel like so many of these things that we're doing were unfortunately upsetting everybody. We've got the people living in the encampments that are unhappy with the decisions that are being made, we've got people that are living in those neighborhoods that are not going to be happy necessarily, and then there's the rest of Londoners that just care about this issue and keep hearing about all the problems and want us to do something about it. So I'm hoping that as we go forward, we can start talking about some course corrections to this whole of community system response, what is working, what isn't, and what can we do to make a real difference where we start looking after all of the people so that we can start taking care of the people who need shelter, and we can take care of neighborhoods and restore safety to the people who live right next to these parks or need to get out for some fresh air with their families this summer for a little mental health break.
Counselor Hopkins, go ahead.
Yes, your worship, I did support A in the amendment, I want to thank the Counselor for bringing it forward, to me it made it a little bit more clear as it relates to the compliance of establishing the protocol for the encampment. I will not be supporting B, I agree with Counselor Stevenson, it's not clear, I also believe that this is very complicated, and I, you know, if I'm not clear on something and if I'm not sure on something, I'm not going to support it, so if you could break out A, B, not sure if you want to break out C as well, but I'll not be supporting B.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to do them all separate, A, B, and C. Other speakers? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship, so I will be supporting the motion fully. What has become very clear to me, and folks can have different interpretations of clarity in language, and that's true, and Counselor Tressa, I agree with you, we're not unanimous on things, and we're allowed to have different opinions, that's fine, but for me, from my position, what has become clear is what's happened in Watson Park was a public safety hazard that is putting individuals at risk, including those homeowners in the immediate vicinity, including our own park asset for property damage, and including some of the individuals who were staying there. The camp has been allowed to become too big, it is out of compliance, regardless of some separations from tents, when I see postings about wedding tents being erected there, Mr. Dickens called them fortifications, one that looks like a carport, that is not anywhere close to what we would consider as within compliance where we would not sanction a location, but we would not disrupt it either. However, we're at a point where for me, there needs to be a disruption of this site because it is creating a public safety hazard, and I don't need to weigh the Waterloo's or the Hamilton's, actually, I think there's some relevance to both, but I think that we are in a very precarious climate in terms of what's changing, in fact, next week, we're going to have a new federal government. Regardless of who wins, we're going to have a new federal government who's going to set a whole bunch of new policies and procedures on things, including how this is dealt with. You know, the previous item we were dealing with, federal funding, that was going to 602 Queens, and the federal government has a role to play here, but we have a role to play too, and I am not going to pretend by any stretch of the imagination that my ward is nearly as impacted as Counselor Ferrera's or Counselor Stevenson's or Counselor McAllister's, but it is impacted. And for those Counselors who aren't impacted by encampments in their wards, I understand that you're taking a different lens and a different approach to this, but for those of us who have to deal with the realities of this and how the residents are feeling, residents who are feeling unsafe in their own homes, there has to be a change in what we're doing here, and I think that this is a responsible first step towards that. You know, we're moving away from the static depot anyway, so why would we continue services there for one more week at a location that's proving to be very problematic, to the point where fire had to respond to a very serious situation for hours on end? So for me, I know we're going to continue to have this conversation, I know we're going to continue to agree on some things and disagree on some other things, and that's okay, we're allowed to have differences of opinion, but I am not okay with leaving things the status quo that we have at Watson Park right now. So I'm going to fully support the Counselor because I know from my own, it's much smaller experience, but nonetheless from my own experience with residents nearby and how they're feeling about these situations, and I know Counselor Stevenson hears it all the time, and I know Counselor Ferrer hears it all the time, those voices have to be factored into this decision too, they matter, they do, and so I'm going to be supporting this 100%.
Counselor Privel.
Thank you, I will be supporting all that's in front of us as well, my first concern was if we were to proclaim this park as 100% no-go zone, that would be an issue for me, that's not the case, it is more clear for me now because it does say that it will be according to the encampment protocols, and we are the ones who set them, I don't know what was the vote, but bottom line is, it has passed, if these protocols potentially were followed, maybe this wouldn't have happened, so we are getting back on track. Encampments is not the best solution, we all know that, we all agree with that, I do believe that this is another sign that we have to start looking in between, on one side, extreme we have encampments, on the other ones we have hubs, and we have to start really thinking outside the box and exploring other opportunities. Going back to the motion in front of us, I will be supporting all as it is in front of us, thank you.
Counselor Ferrera.
Thank you, Mayor, so we did have a lengthy debate at committee, and we did do some amendments at committee, and I thought they were good, I do like the clarity that we have here. For the comments that I've been hearing, you know, I agree with a lot of the things that I say, the status quo is not working, and, you know, we need to break from that, but I would also remind us that some of that status quo is built upon by us in this council. We, you know, we have our restrictions, setbacks that we have allowed and have not allowed people in encampments to be as far as from parks or schools or daycares or houses, we had that conversation on how that could lead to the potential concentration of where people are allowed to be because it takes out a lot of the geographical space in the city. We do find ourselves at this council chambers with respect, shutting down some of our capability, some of our capacity, with respect to no municipal funding on a BIA boundary, I understand the intention for that, I just feel like we should have the next step in line before we make a move like that, and because of that, we have lost resting spaces, we've lost the indoor capacity, we've lost other spaces for other agencies like Safe Space as well, and, you know, if we are going to be really kind of talking about the situation that we have in an encampment, and we don't want encampments, and I don't want to see any encampments, we need to also know that we need to build on the other end of that capacity, we want people in housing, we need to start opening up doors for people to get into housing, we can't be closing doors, and that's really what I'm saying. So when it comes to that, like the status quo idea is something that I would like to depart from, but I would also say that we have a stake, we have control on creating what that status is for the status quo. I really like the comments that the deputy mayor made, I don't come to the same conclusions as the deputy mayor, but the comments basically was saying that we need to have a citywide lens as we work on our homelessness response, we can't have a ward-specific lens, because if we get into the lenses of our wards specifically, we find ourselves in the battle of the wards, we find ourselves in not moving business according to what our objectives are, and that is to bring people indoors, to bring people into housing, supportive housing, wraparound supportive housing, indoors, not in encampments. So I would say, as the downtown Counselor, you know, this might be something that is easier for me to say, because yes, I, and my ward is very heavily impacted as well as Ward One and Ward Four, but the citywide lens is really kind of what I have been bringing, not kind of, is what I have been bringing every single time we speak to this matter, and I would say to all of you, we should bring that citywide approach as well, because this is a citywide issue, and it comes right back down to if we were to seize operations at Watson Park, the question is, where do people go? Where do people go? And that's really what was spoke about at the committee, where do people go? And this comes down to the fact that maybe not in Watson Park, but where else in the city. So taking a citywide approach, a citywide lens as we make choices and decisions, we need to ensure that it's the whole city that we need to look at, and we need to ensure that regardless of the ward that we're in, or regardless of just kind of what our direction is for our ward-specific items, we need to know and we need to make sure that we incorporate the entire city, and that's really kind of what I want to say, it's like, it boils down to that citywide approach, and if we really want to beat this status quo, we need to start kind of wearing our full City of London hats. With that, it's a matter of, I don't want to see the status quo that we have, I don't, I'm not happy with it, I don't like it, but we need to start building more capacity, we need to start opening doors, there should be no more closing doors, there should be no more shutting down and dismantling our capacity done at this council, because this Watson Park item that we're speaking to right now would not be
Thirty seconds.
-- would not be to the extreme extent that it is if we didn't do some of the things in the past that we have done. The whole of community response is not in full within operation, we have not completely opened up the whole of community response as it originally came to us from staff. So, you know, if we did, we would be in a separate, we would be in an entirely different situation, so basically what I'm saying is, we need to start opening up more doors, that question of where do people go is why I wouldn't be supportive of item B. Item A I'm supportive of, but I'll leave it there, but it's really, where do people go?
Thank you, Counselor. Any other speakers who haven't spoken yet? Okay, we're going to divide this into A, B, and C separately. A is the amended A that, based on Counselor McAllister's amendment, B is the direction about the ending of depot operations, C is basically receiving the letter from Counselor McAllister at the committee, so we'll start with A. We'll open that for voting.
Counselor Plosa votes yes?
Counsel, close the votes, yes?
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 1.
Okay, and now we'll move to B, which is the ceasing of operations of the service depot there. We'll open that for voting.
Counsel, close the votes, no.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 9 to 6.
And C is the receiving of Counsel McAllister's communication. We'll open that for voting.
Counsel, close the votes, yes?
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Counsel McAllister.
That concludes the Community and Protective Services Committee report.
Okay, we're moving on to the next council report. It's the report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I'll turn it over to Chair Lehman to present that report.
Thank you. I'm pleased to put the sixth reporter of the Planning and Environment Committee on the floor. I'm going to be pulling 4, 6, and 10.
Go ahead, Counsel Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. As I was saying, I've heard from folks to pull 4, 6, and 10. I've had no other requests.
Anything else to be dealt with separately from the Planning and Environment Committee report? Okay, go ahead. You can make a motion, Counselor.
Thank you. So I'd like to move all items from 1 through 13, excluding 4, 6, and 10.
Okay, those are on the floor by the chair. Any discussion on those items? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Counsel, close the votes, yes?
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Go ahead, Counsel Lehman.
Thank you. So I'll put number 4 on the floor. This is regarding 3095 Boswick Road.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look for speakers. Go ahead, Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. And I'd like to, first of all, start with thanking the committee members for bringing forward an amendment that I brought forward for Boswick Road at PEC. And it did fail 3 to 2. And I am bringing it forward here, looking for council support. So I would like to bring forward the amendment before I speak to it. Or should I speak to it first and then bring the amendment forward, Your Worship?
First, if you could just read the amendment, and then I will look for a secondar. And then you can speak to it then, or you can speak to it later. Your choice.
Yes, and it's the same amendment. It's Part C, be amended to include I, to read as follows. I, the subdivision approval authority, include a draft plan conditioned specific to natural heritage compensation for the 1.27 hectares of features removal consisting of 0.57 hectares of wetlands and 0.70 hectares of woodlands to demonstrate no net loss to the natural heritage features and functions to the satisfaction of the city. If the owner is unable to compensate for the full 1.27 hectares on the subject lands, the balance is to be provided on non-city lands external to the subject lands. That's the amendment.
Okay, is there a secondar for that amendment? So, Your Worship, on a point of order.
Okay.
Just want to check procedurally. This was defeated at committee. So would this be contrary to the recommendation that the committee forwarded? Because the committee did forward a recommendation after specifically voting this out. So it did not make it through committee. It failed at committee. The counselor has the right to bring it up again. It does not change the bylaw. It's a site plan piece, so it could be dealt with today. So I'm ruling it to be in order to have the amendment on the floor. Okay? And it is seconded by Counsel Ferrera? Okay, so now on the amendment, Counsel Hopkins, would you like to speak to the amendment now?
Yes, I think I can speak to it. Thank you very much. And I want to just, Deputy Mayor, appreciate his question. This is a site plan process that it would follow. And it is important to, first of all, understand that we do have to demonstrate no net loss when it comes to a natural environment. And this application consists of 113 new residential homes. There's three wetlands, and there's part of an environmentally sensitive woodlot that is being developed as well. So that, those natural features, which are very important to residents in the area, and I think to us as a city, we need to demonstrate that we're not going to lose that part of the environment part. And so if these wetlands and woodlands cannot be accommodated on this development, we can find other areas in the city. And to me, it's really just following up that we follow those policies and processes in place. And I'm looking for your support.
Okay, I'm looking for other speakers on this item, the amendment only. Deputy Mayor Lewis, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So I didn't support this at committee, and I'm not going to support it here either. But through you, I would like to ask a question of our planning staff, which is if this is written in as direction to staff through site plan, which is what's being proposed, does that have the effect of then tying your hands in terms of what compensation you may deem adequate? Which, right now, is a bit of a delegated authority thing. So, for example, I need to preface this a little bit so that I can clearly articulate the question. Language speaks to the compensation may not be on city lands. And so therefore, in the site plan approval, if there was a proposal for some compensation that was on a piece of city land, even a remnant piece, or a cash-in lieu, and I understand that we have some policies that aren't fully developed. We don't have mechanisms for necessarily all of these yet. But as those are being developed, they may actually come online before building permits are approved and site plans are finalized and those sorts of things. So does this have the impact of tying your hands in terms of you can only seek compensation on the developers' privately-held lands here or on other sites versus the flexibility that you would have with negotiating some compensation by leaving this out?
Go ahead.
Through Your Worship, what it's trying to say is looking at alternative lands for compensation. And as you've mentioned, there are policies and procedures that are under review currently. However, the intent is the developer would find on lands or reciprocal lands of other development.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So if that wasn't clear, I'll let other colleagues ask that question again in a different way if they want. But for me, it is pretty clear is that we would actually be limiting the ability to negotiate compensation that we feel is adequate for what's happening here, which includes the counsel-referenced wetlands that are on-site. Approval for relocation of a portion of those wetlands to another location on-site has already been approved. So there's a reason for, to me, that this was not in the staff recommendation. And I've dealt with compensation pieces in my own ward and on other planning files as well. And I think it's best that we allow the flexibility for our staff through site plan approval and the applicant to find ways to create the compensation without saying it can only be within these existing lands or reciprocal lands that you have. We're not going to take it as a city benefit on city lands. We're not going to take it in other places. Right now, with reciprocal lands, and ask staff one other question, if you'll allow, Your Worship. Have we had compensation provided currently through site plan agreements like this where the compensation on reciprocal lands has actually happened outside the municipality of the City of London?
Go ahead.
Through Your Worship, my understanding that some receiving lands are in Haldeman Township.
Thank you. So there's another concern to me. I don't feel like providing compensation on reciprocal lands in Haldeman Township is actually of any net benefit to the City of London. And so when we start talking about these reciprocal lands, it's a careful what you wish for. If we're not going to let it happen on city property, we might be sending it to another municipality. And so for me, that's why I won't support this. I encourage colleagues to support the committee recommendation.
Other speakers on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open the amendment for voting.
Counsel, close the votes, yes?
Closing the vote. Motion fails. 5 to 10.
Okay, so now just the committee recommendations on the floor. Any debate or discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll open.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 1.
Counsel Lehman.
Okay, I'd like to put number 6 on the floor. It's regarding 1622 Evans Boulevard.
Okay, that's on the floor. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open that for voting.
Counsel, close the votes, yes?
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 1.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. I'd like to put 801 Sarnia Road on the floor.
All right, 801 Sarnia Road is on the floor. I'll look to speakers, including, I think, Counsel Ramon, you circulated an amendment? Or no? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you. So my understanding is that what's on the floor has to be defeated in order for me to introduce another motion. So I'm just wanting clarification.
Yeah, sorry, my mistake. I said amendment, but you're correct. You'd have to defeat it. So if you could speak to it now and figure out how to convince everybody to defeat it, then you could move a motion afterwards.
Okay, thank you, and through you. So I did circulate some language for a potential motion. It should this fail to pass. So this is regarding what I saw take place at committee around 801 Sarnia Road. We had the applicant put forward an application for 10 stories. And the site-specific policy says that there can be, or sorry, no, it's not a site-specific, but that area policy is that there can be six stories in this area. I'm very familiar with this part of town. I represent the other side of the tracks in this part of town. And so when I looked at this from the lens of Sarnia Road, I feel that the intensification at eight stories isn't overly intense for this area and the type of development that's being put forward. We're talking about growing inward and upward. We're talking about where to do that. I also represent Gainsborough Road, which is not far from this area. And if we can do 17 stories on Gainsborough, why would we not be able to do eight stories on Sarnia? And that's, I think, one of the challenges we have here. One of the issues I heard was, well, this is, you know, a tight confined space. Yeah, we're going to run into these situations because we're looking to infill. And so we're not going to have these perfect parcels in order to do our infill development. We're going to have to consider, well, what does the entire area look like? And so I've walked it. I've driven in the area. I recently did a walkathon in the area. And I can tell you that where it's located in respect to the retirement home, the frontage of this property doesn't actually interfere with the retirement home across the street. For those residential developments beside, I don't see it as overly intrusive. I know there were some concerns around parking and things like that. And I think that can be addressed through the amendment that's, or sorry, through the additional motion that I've put forward. We have to think of this parcel instead of thinking of it as three separate parcels that were too already developed. We have to think about it in conjunction to what's surrounding it and what has been developed. So I do think there is a way to look at this at an appropriate height of what I see as eight stories. And in my opinion, it would be a good use to provide units in this oddly-shaped parcel to support infill and to support development on Sarnia Road.
Okay. Other speakers to this. Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you. So in the interest of brevity, I'm going to say, first of all, I agree with everything Counsel Ramon just said. And she spends more area time there than I do, so I'm not going to dispute that. I think she's bang on. You know, I was actually willing to support 10 at this location. The one neighbor is the railway. And shadows are going to fall on the rail line, not on residential homes. The other neighbor to the west is a parcel of property owned by the same applicant. So they're going to be their own neighbor. We've got a 36-meter-wide roadway between the residents on the south and this site, which is a pretty significant distance apart, considering where we normally see some setbacks on properties that are right adjacent to each other. So I definitely think that this area can take in eight stories here. I think this is a reasonable compromise. I think that we heard a lot of concerns raised in the PPM on this that were frankly the result of, Counsel Tressaw will be happy to know it wasn't a counselor, but a result of misinformation online, talking about rail safety. Well, CP Rail has no concerns about this. Talking about lack of parking. This actually meets our parking minimums. We said, when we set parking minimums at half a space per unit, that we recognize not all apartment tenants are going to have cars. They're not going to want cars. And this building is proposing to do exactly that, follow that half a spot per unit standard. We're talking about something that is serviceable by LTC to Western. We saw in the applicant's proposal that they plan on running a shuttle service between the building and the university and Masonville Mall for their tenants. So there is a benefit. We heard concerns about, some degree about it being confined and constrained to a small parcel. But it's really important to note that the applicant has conveyed to the city land to the north between their property and the railway for multi-use pathway. And I don't know the exact meters, and I'm not going to ask staff to pull it up because I think it's 10 or 12 meters or something like that of land being conveyed. But don't quote me on that number because it may be wrong. But one of the reasons the parcel is smaller now is because the applicant freely gave us some land to create a connection to a pathway that the neighborhood is using anyway. Except now we'll have an actual official pathway that can be connected and provide that transportation connectivity. So I think there's been a lot done here. As I said, I was willing to go to 10, but I think eight's a fine compromise. So I'm going to be voting against the committee recommendation. And I will speak to. And I will speak to any recommendation that Counsel Ramon might put on the floor after, if this is defeated, because I'll be supporting that.
Counsel Lehman.
Thank you. Yeah, I support the staff recommendation in this case of going to 10, of not going to 10 stories. I'm going to repeat, I apologize, what has been said prior to just kind of make sure everyone understands this parcel of land. It's a triangle essentially with the railway coming up from the east up across the north side. So to the east, there's railway bridge overpass. So there's no, there's not any neighbors on that side. To the north, as Counsel Ramon said, is the railway lines. To the west, there is mid-density of two-and-a-half-story and three-and-a-half-story walk-ups. And on the cross-street, there is a substantial seniors, four-story substantial seniors residence. As far as community's feedback is concerned, the applicant held a public meeting for neighbors in the area back in October. It was a Zoom meeting. It was attended by six people with no significant pushback at that time. And this was on the 10-story. There was more questions being asked at PEC, where we had the public participation meeting. We had four people in the gallery. Three were neighbors that didn't want to see any development going forward. And one was a neighbor who lived next door that actually spoke out in favor for the reason that we all are talking about infill. She is renting and she wants to see more supply on the market. As far as amenities are concerned, yeah, I think as that pathway mentioned by the deputy mayor, it's quite important. There's going to be a pathway extension all the way down behind this particular development, all the way down the other developments to connect up to Sarnia and Hyde Park, where there's a commercial plaza there, which I just have found out that there's going to be a grocery store opening there. So that pathway is going to be used not only by the residents there, but it's going to be used by the folks across the street from Sarnia, you know, Beaverbrook and whatnot, allow them to either walk or take their bike to do some shopping, which I think is terrific. There's good transit on there. We're always hoping for more. There's, I understand, there is transportation concerns. We're pushing for, you know, a light at Beaverbrook and Sarnia. I think the next traffic study hopefully will support that. So I think this is a good compromise. And the last point I want to make is this. I was kind of looking for a compromise in my mind. I thought 10 was too high, it was probably right, but I didn't want to get into that on the floor of planning. I thought that this is the reason we have space between committee and council, and I want to thank Counsel Ramon for doing the work with the applicant to come up with a possible compromise here that can be presented should this motion fail. So I will not be supporting the PAC recommendation.
Counsel Cuddy.
Thank you, Worship and through you. I did not support this at committee, but I will be supporting it today. And I want to thank the applicant for making the accommodations to bring it from 10 to eight stories. I think that's more amenable to council. Deputy Mayor Lewis already addressed some of the mobility issues, and I'd just like to hit a few that he didn't hit. Keep in mind that Sarnia Road is a dedicated bicycle lane, so there's lots of room for cycle transit, as well as LTC operates. Two stops in the vicinity of the site, Route 30 with a link to Western and Route 21 with access to downtown. Deputy Mayor Lewis also addressed the issues of parking. We meet the standards. And yeah, I will add that the applicant has been great to work with and making these accommodations, so I'll be happy to support this. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll just outline that although you articulated that you're happy to support this, what's on the floor is the committee's recommendation to refuse. So everybody who spoke so far is basically asking you to defeat the committee's recommendation.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, I should be addressing this to Counsel Ramon's amendment, and I do that. So I'm a little early on that one.
No, I'm not sending you a counsel. I think a few people are speaking that way. I just want to be clear for people before they vote that.
So I'll be defeating the motion but supporting Counsel Ramon's amendment, motion. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. I have myself that I'm going to speak briefly to this, and I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor. I will take the chair and recognize Mayor Morgan.
So I'll speak very briefly. I think this is one where a whole bunch of people could want to jump in on and provide a bunch of comments. I was kind of mixed coming into this, but what I hear is the ward counselor on one side of the road saying that this makes sense for the community, the ward counselor who's worded it as saying this makes sense for the community, a little more intense than what, or a little less intense than what our staff refused, a little more than what's there. Seems like a good compromise. I will be voting against the committee recommendation and supporting something at about, at eight stories.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will return the chair to you, noting Counsel Ploza had her hand up on Zoom. Okay, I've got Counsel Ploza, Stevenson, and Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to highlight on this one, as I was also a no at PAC, that as we hear colleagues say, you know, infill, get something built there, just highlighting through the report as it was a larger report, that originally it was approved for five stories and was approved. Then it came back for six stories, which was approved. And that approval, it actually came with four one-bedroom affordable units that'd be part of the city's affordable housing stock. Staff, do you note within the report that if the applicant wished that those four units could be removed as bonusing is no longer a tool in our toolbox? Realizing that the 10 stories is a lot more. I know that we're always trying to find the middle ground. Should this application, the no vote passed here at committee, I will speak to the eight as my concern still follows with different rounds of approval when we're trying to get shovels in the ground and housing built, and we just keep doing more intensification, and we'd actually be losing more affordable housing. Thank you.
Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you. I'm just going to say I was disappointed to see it fail at committee. I too would have supported the 10 stories. I think, and I supported 10 stories out in Oxford, at Oxford and Clemens and Oxford at Stewart, even though there are no 10 stories out there and there are single-family homes right beside it, because housing was the number one priority. And it makes sense on the main street, which was Oxford. And I think I went back and I watched the planning committee meeting, and I think, you know, nobody wants years of construction right beside them. I mean, I think that's a given, but we get to look at the future and where we're going. And if we don't want to be out in the middle of nowhere building, then it's going to be an inconvenience in the short term. I appreciate the work that was done to bring forward something. I'm going to be defeating this. I'm going to be supporting the new motion. And I just think it's important that we do find ways to say yes. Yes to housing, yes to the development charges, yes to the ongoing property tax revenue. These are great locations, and I'll be happy to support the next motion.
Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. And I really appreciate some of the comments that I've heard here this afternoon on this application, but I am going to be supporting the committee's recommendation to support staff. And I appreciate the ward counselor. It's important that we hear from the ward counselor. She's trying to make that compromise. But I have a ward. It's all about development. And we're going to see, and we've seen in the past, there are some applications that we're approving here tonight, on applications that have come forward based on other decisions that we've made, not understanding the consequences of those decisions. And yet we find ourselves sometimes in this compromising situation. So to start off with, I support infill. That's going to happen. It's the conversation I have with my residents all the time. When I'm not sure what to do, I rely on our policies. Maximum is six stories. It's not near a primary transit route. We just changed our policies a number of months ago. And we're going to see more applications coming forward to us to approve. And I want to understand the reasons why we are supporting more than what our policies allow. And as much as I agree we need to compromise, I really am not sure if we understand the consequences to some of our decisions, and that's why I'm supporting the committee's recommendation as well as the staff's recommendation.
Counsel Trussell.
Thank you. And through the chair, I think what Counsel Hopkins just said is very sensible, and I'm going to agree with that approach. I would like to ask staff, however, what, how did we land at six? How did we land at the decision that this is not a primary transit area? How did we land at a decision where 10 would have been not keeping with the requirements, nor would eight be keeping with the requirements? In short, how did we, how did we land at the decision that this should be no more than six?
If you could articulate some of the reasons you wrote in the report there or beyond that, you could, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. Yes, the justification for the primary transit area was established through the London Plan. And that would allow the eight stories as of right through the recent council review back in last fall. And six stories was outside of the PTA, and council opted not to make those changes at that time.
Go ahead.
Well, that's helpful. I don't see any, why do we have these rules if we're not going to follow them? Why do we go through the process of crafting these rules very carefully? I suspect we landed at these roles with some very diligent staff work. I haven't had the opportunity to serve on the PEC this term, but it just seems to me we have developed a set of criteria to govern the size of these buildings. And it just, it just, just because somebody said 10 and, oh, eight will be a great, this is not a game of cards. This is not a game of cards. This is a game of balancing the environment and our existing plans against this mindset that just get as much as you can. So I'm going to be supporting the staff report, and I'd really, I'd really like to hear a good reason why that, all the work that went into that staff report was not valid, because then maybe I could move a little bit. But other than the fact that, well, they said 10 and now they're saying eight, and eight's a nice compromise, and both the ward counselors are in favor of it, and et cetera, I don't understand why we have these rules if we don't follow them. So let's follow the rules today, and I will be supporting the staff report. Thank you.
Any other speakers who haven't spoken yet? So it's the staff recommendation that's on the floor from committee, which was the refusal of 10. That's what's on the floor. Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Counsel Ploza votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion fails, five to 10.
Okay, that failed. Counsel Ramon, you had an alternate motion that you wanted to put on the floor?
Thank you, and through you, I've submitted an alternate motion, and I'm not sure if it can be pulled up on the screen.
Well, I'm going to look to see if there's, I'm sure there's a secondary based on the debate, but Counsel Stevenson's willing to second, so we will get that on the screen. Okay, I'm just refreshing. Give me one second.
I'm happy to read it if you'd like.
Okay, given it wasn't on the added agenda, I do want you to actually read it.
Thank you. So notwithstanding the recommendation of the Director of Planning and Development, the following actions be taken with respect to the application for Royal Premier Homes related to the property located at 801 Sarnia Road. A, the proposed bylaw attached as appendix A be introduced at the municipal council meeting on April 22, 2025 to amend the official plan, the London Plan, by adding a new policy to the specific policies for the neighborhood place type and adding the lands to map seven specific policy areas. B, the proposed bylaw attached as appendix B be introduced at the municipal council meeting on April 22, 2025 to amend zoning bylaw number Z1 in conformity with the official plan. The London Plan is amended in part A above to change the zoning of the subject property from a holding residential R8 special provision bonus, and then H8R8474B40 zone to a residential R9 special provision R97 zone. C, the site plan approval authority be requested to consider the following through the site plan review. I, to ensure the functionality of the development, flexibility should be granted regarding the provision of landscaped islands within the rear parking area in lieu of additional onsite parking stalls to meet the 0.5 stall per unit ratio. Two, work with the developer to ensure an economical form of construction that supports project feasibility by avoiding the requirement for building step backs. D, pursuant to subsection 3417 of the Planning Act, no further notice be given, and it being noted that the above noted amendment is being recommended for the following reasons. One, the recommended amendment would permit residential intensification that is appropriate.
Okay, so that's moved and seconded. I'll look to see if you want to speak to it. Go ahead.
Thank you. And again, I won't reiterate all my points, but I want to first say thanks for the discussion here. I think it's really important to be able to reflect on the decisions that we're making and to entertain other opportunities and conversations in between. Again, I hear what my colleague also mentioned about affordable housing and the consideration for that in the original application, and noting that we do not, no longer, sorry, we no longer have that bonusing requirement associated. It's difficult for us to say what makes sense for the applicant to do when it comes to looking for additional support for the community. However, I'm confident that there's an opportunity to continue discussions with the developer to see where appropriate. There might be opportunities to support some of the strategic priorities of the city further. That's what good relationship building is about. We have the opportunity to have discussions about what is in the interest of the community around here. So I'll say this. This area, as we continue to build, as we continue to intensify in this area, in my opinion, is missing a lot of neighborhood amenities, is missing opportunities within our close and nearby parks. If you go to Maple Grove Park, which is kind of across the railway tracks, which will have a really beautiful linkage through the neighborhood, and you go to Maple Grove Park on a busy weekday night, this park is packed. It is filled with residents of the neighborhood. It is filled with seniors and children. There's nowhere to sit. There's very little amenities, and there's very little things to do to activate this space. And so what I'm hoping is, is we continue to build out and develop, we think about what are the amenities that our neighborhood, our neighborhoods need? What kind of park facilities do we have? You know, what kind of thinking are we putting into even the school buses that will be coming to pick up kids in these areas? There's a lot of considerations that need to be made. I agree with my colleagues that as we continue to intensify, we need to be having those kinds of conversations. So I look forward to those continued discussions. I know it would be very beneficial for my residents, and I'm hoping that the ward counselor can continue those discussions as well for these residents.
Okay, other speakers. Oh, sorry, Counsel Stevenson, I had John Lewis. Go ahead.
No, that's good, thanks. I just want to address the concerns that were expressed around why would we go different than the six stories when that was the policy? And when we establish policies, we don't have the foresight of what's happening in the world. And I don't think we can deny that the world has changed, and there's an economic reality here that doesn't have anything to do with the greed of a developer. And so I did hear that comment at the planning committee when I listened to the recording. And I just want to say, we so often, when we talk to Londoners, they want more housing. We need more housing. And then when developers bring forward bold plans with lots of housing, we somehow make derogatory comments about how they're just in it for the money. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you for being willing to invest in our city. Thank you for being willing to turn on a dime. Thank you for being willing to turn on a dime here and come forward with something that we can act on today and not have to wait, because people do need housing, and we need housing of all different forms. And I also heard when I was listening to the planning meeting that this is part of a larger project and that we could have had all apartment buildings at a lower level, and that would have been according to the plan, but that's not what Londoners want. We want the townhouses and the apartment buildings. And so to see it as one big project, I think, is helpful. And I guess that's just my point, is if it was all about policy and sticking to past policies, none of us would need to be here, because the decisions would already be made. And that's why we are here, is to be able to have input and respond to the moment in time and the needs of our community.
Thanks. I'll look for other speakers. Counselor Trosaw.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, my hand's up online, too.
Oh, I can't see it, sorry. Oh, you know why? Because if the camera's on, I can't actually see the hand. But I think you... Counselor Trosaw just put up his hand, so I'll go to you first. So go ahead, Counselor Pelosi, because you had your hand up first. Yeah.
Sorry, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
I can now.
Perfect. I sent wording to the clerk and deputy clerk. I'm looking to make an amendment, just hoping they can pull it up. I emailed it. I'll read it out as we go.
Sure, go ahead.
That the applicant be requested... Fuck's sake, sorry, this crazy thing. Sorry, I'm getting out of... Joy of remote. That the applicant be requested to meet with municipal housing and industrial and development to explore viable contributions Royal Premier Homes can make to affordable housing initiatives in the city. Looking for a second or, and then I'll speak to it.
Okay, just in case you broke up a little bit there for part of it, I will read what you said. So the motion be amended to add a new Part E that reads as follows. E, the applicant be requested to meet with municipal housing and industrial development to explore viable contributions Royal Premier Homes can make to affordable housing initiatives in the city. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yes, and it's been clerked, and the applicant's aware of it.
Okay. I'll look for a second or for that. Counselor Lehman willing to second? Okay, Counselor Lehman is willing to second that. So we're now on the amendment. Would you like to speak to the amendment, Counselor Pelosi?
Yes, please. Just wanted to thank the applicant. We had discussions like this as it went through the 10 stories. Now it's at eight. Realizing this is that they're requested to, there's nothing legally binding on it, it may or may not be on this property, another property, or what units they might be able to do, just realizing that we do need housing, and it's housing for everyone, and just if we're going to be losing those affordable units but giving more height, hoping that there's an opportunity to still move housing stock forward in the city. And as I said, it's been clerked, and the applicant is aware of this. Thank you, and thank you to them for the conversation through text.
Okay, thank you. So that's moved and seconded, so now we're just on this amendment, which is on the screens and he scribed for you now. Any discussion on this? Counselor McAllister, go ahead.
Thank you, and through the mayor, I just want to say I appreciate the developer putting this forward. I've had past experiences in working for Royal Premier Homes, and I appreciate them working with the city in terms of finding, whether it be housing, community improvements. They've shown a willingness to work with us, and I appreciate that. I'd be supportive of the amendment, but I just want to acknowledge that we can work with developers to find a way forward, and I'll support this in the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead on the amendment. Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I'll support it because there's no requirement to do it. I don't think we need affordable housing in everything that we do. If there's some open discussion about it, and it can possibly work, fine, but there's all kinds of opportunities. When we add to housing stock, people might have the opportunity to upgrade, which will free up housing that's available to other people. So just having movement is good, but I'm not opposed to any discussion around it, as long as there's no requirement.
Yeah, it's a be requested, just so everybody's clear. Deputy Mary Lewis.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. And similar to Counselor Stevenson, it's a discussion. That's fine. We can have the discussion with the developer. But I will say I get a little bit concerned about these things in terms of discussions, because I also actually heard very clearly what Counselor Rahman was saying and the need for amenity space and park investments and things like that. And the struggle I have is, yes, we have a big need for housing of all types, including affordable housing, but when we start to look at housing development only through the lens of, well, we're not going to do it unless you provide affordable, I think we actually miss out on other opportunities that are equally valuable to our municipal budget in terms of investments that might be made in our park spaces. You know, I talked earlier about the land conveyance that's happened so that we can create this beautiful trail system that's going to connect people on the south side of the tracks to Maple Grove Park. When we look at the London Plan, and even though it is out of date, and we have some changes that are in, and we have some other changes coming, there's a whole list of community benefits that could be considered and used to be under bonusing could be considered. It wasn't just affordable housing. There was a whole list of things. And please check out the London Plan and give that some thought moving forward. As I said, I'll support the amendment here because it's a request for a discussion that may or may not lead anywhere, but what we will... What I'd like us to take into consideration moving forward is what other community benefits do we need? There is more than just housing. Yes, housing is at the top of the list, but it's not going to work, and it's not going to be a financially viable model for some developers. And ultimately, when we get to the point of, you know, we could lose four affordable units on this property, well, actually, we could lose 100... Now, the numbers changed because we lost two floors. But we could lose over 100 units of new housing, period, if we don't support something going forward. And so not only do we lose the four affordable units, we lose all the units. So that's something that we have to keep in mind, and I know I've shared this with colleagues before. There are vacant lots in the city right now that have been zoned and that have affordable units counted in them that do not exist. So it's, you know, what we can get today, the bird in the hand is worth more than two in the bush, and I think that this is offering us a bird in hand where we can create some housing today. So I'll support the discussion, but I'm hesitant to continue to support these requests for discussion when we actually... To me, it feels a little bit like an exercise that we're just going to go through to check a box, because we don't have the bonusing tools to require these things anymore.
I have Counselor Trosaw, myself, and Counselor Privil.
I'll reserve my comments through the chair on why I cannot support this overall till when we get to the main motion. For now, I'll say as to Counselor Pelosi's amendment, yeah, sure, I'll vote for that. I'm not thrilled about it, because I don't think there's any teeth to it. Yeah, we'll do this, and for the same reason that some of my colleagues have said they can support it, I'm not that excited about it. But sure, let's talk to them about the opportunity of doing this. But we need more specific policies that are going to lead us to affordable housing. And I don't think it's fair to say if we don't do this, we lose all eight stories. If we don't do this, I don't know if the developer is going to come back with something. I don't know if the developer is going to come back with six, or something with more affordable units, or some other form. I don't know that. So I think I'm starting to get into the main motion here, and I'll stop myself and just say, yeah, sure, I'll support this amendment, but it doesn't move the needle for me on the big question here today. Thank you.
I'll turn the chair over to Deputy Mary Lewis. Myself is on... I'm on the list. And I've got my timer open, so I'll take the chair and recognize Mayor Morgan.
Good, I'll be brief. I'll support the amendment. I also want to thank the counselor for recognizing that be requested is the appropriate pattern here. I want to say on affordable units, there are a number of affordable units across the city, as the deputy mayor mentioned, that were tied into zoning through either Section 37 or other provisions from years ago when the housing market was very different. To Counselor Trosaw's point, I've sat down with multiple developers in this city to understand the economics and the performance of development, because it is important to understand that if things make a development not economically viable, it won't get built. If things make a development not as advantageous as deploying the capital in another city somewhere else, it won't get built here. So it is not always about the affordable units. I think we are very committed to building affordable units in the city, and we do so through other mechanisms that the municipality has at its disposal. The roadmap to 3,000, the work we're doing with London and all six community housing. We have policy tools and avenues to create affordable housing. We have to be very cautious to ensure that we recognize that capital... We're in a competition for the capital of developers, like full stop. And we need to ensure that those units get built in our city. The conversation is important, because I think Royal Premier Homes is a great partner, who is always willing to have a conversation about what our needs are as a city, and do their best to try to accommodate those within the economics of their projects. And they've been a great builder here in London. But just I want colleagues to recognize that this is a good conversation to have, but it's probably not the last time. We're going to have to have a conversation about existing zoning, whether or not it's viable in the city, and what we can get now, and how we can leverage our roadmap to 3,000 to try to secure those affordability pieces, because this is a conversation we're likely to have multiple times in the future. So happy to support the amendment, happy to support the main motion on the floor, and I'll look forward to the votes.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will return the chair to you. I have Counselor Privil.
Thank you. I will be supporting the motion, and I will be supporting the entire proposal that's in front of us. I do want to state that for me, the community benefits parks and spaces is actually more valuable. I'm a true believer in supply and demand, and additional two floors of the additional units will again increase the supply, and I truly believe that supply and demand is going to get us there, and I really think that we should look at the other opportunities. And if I remember correctly, this developer a couple of few months ago in Ward 1 actually proposed with his development such community initiatives benefits, which is going to be much more beneficial to our community. Thank you.
Okay, that exhausts the speakers' list on Counselor Pelosi's amendment. So we're going to open voting on just the amendment.
Counselor Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, marking Counselor Van Meerebergen absent. Motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor Rahman. Are you willing to move the as amended motion? Yes, and Counsel... Oh, Counselor Stevenson, you were the second or still willing? Okay, great. So the as amended motion is on the floor now. I'll take any speakers to the as amended motion. Counselor Lehman, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to point out one thing I neglected to point out when I spoke earlier about public engagement. There was a gentleman who was online at PEC, and he also was president at the public participation meeting that the developer had back in October. The gist of his speaking was an online petition that he had, which I believe at that time had 100 people signed up. But the substance of that petition or survey, or whatever you want to call it, was against a development of any kind. There were suggestions that we should expropriate that property for a city park, which would, being beside the railway and being in regular shape and hardly accessible, would not be considered for sure. I want to remind the community that there's already zoning allowed for a six-story building. So we're not going to have... There's going to be a building there, whether it's six-story or eight-story. You know, why are we going to eight? Well, 10 I thought was too high, but, you know, why do we do this in Phil? Like, we do it because of a couple of things. One is, let's talk about affordability. Affordability is pricing. When demand outstrips supply, prices go up. Affordability, in the case of this, six going to eight spreads out the fixed costs, such as elevators, heating, parking, other amenities over more units. So that brings the rental rate down. And also going higher speaks to our alternatives, which is urban sprawl or going to outside the city boundaries. And the final remark I'd like to make is what Counselor Stevenson touched on regarding policy versus guidelines. Our staff follow the London Plan and various amendments that we make to that plan, but those are guidelines presented to us as a council. If they weren't, as I believe Counselor Stevenson mentioned, there'd be no need of us. They would just make the choice whether we do it or not, whether it meets the following guidelines or policies, and then it would be approved or wouldn't be approved. But the fact that's brought to us in itself suggests nuance. So, you know, we look at what the local councillor sees, that he understands, he/she understands the neighborhood, feedback he gets. What's the setting of it? Like, for example, this particular setting for me, I said 10 was too high because of the keeping with the neighbors to the west of it. However, given the fact of the railway and the separation and the retirement home across the street, I didn't see any problem with eight. So that nuance, I believe, is allowed, and we... I, myself, I'll speak for myself. I always look at the Ontario Plan and what staff says as guidelines to help me make a decision within the debate and discussion we have a council. I think this is an appropriate height. I think it will add to our housing stock in an area of town that is good for Enville, and I would remind that six stories has already been approved for this site.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Lehman. Other speakers? Counselor Trosaw.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll keep this very brief, because I think I've made my point. But what I'm hearing here today is we don't have to worry about affordable housing. What I'm hearing today is somehow the benefits of this market rate, or luxury, or somewhere in between, housing is going to trickle down, and somehow it's going to trickle down and benefit people of limited needs who are really in dire need of housing. And I just think before we bet the farm on trickle down, we should understand that every time we approve one of these projects, especially if it's above and beyond what's in our plan and what's recommended by staff, there's an opportunity cost. We can only absorb so much capacity. We can only absorb so much traffic. We can talk about the fact that it would be great if there were better parks here. We could talk about the fact of we're working towards excellent transit. But we're dealing with the city's infrastructure the way it is today. And I think that we need to tell the developer, yes, go ahead and build six, or come back with something else, but I want to say no to this project, because I think we're making a massive policy mistake if we think that we can overlook the dire and pressing need that we need in this community for some level of affordability. Now, affordability comes in a lot of different varieties. It comes in a very mild variety, where it's maybe 80% of market. It comes in a much stricter variety, where we're talking about rent care to income. But to have nothing, to strip this out, is not viable. We are going to have to explain to residents why we are not meeting our affordability guarantees. And we're also going to have to explain to residents why, as a matter of, I think, policy, the free and unfettered market is not, repeat, is not taking care of people's needs in this city. Now, we can overlook it because, oh, it's just two stories, and it's a great part of town, and this developer is wonderful, and a number of councillors have talked about how wonderful it is to work with the developer, and I'm sure it's all true.
how wonderful it is to work with the developer, and I'm sure it's all true. But this is not moving the needle on what we need. So I'm going to be voting no on this, and I'll urge other councillors to do that. And thank you very much, I think I've repeated myself quite a bit, so I'll just, I'll just stop. Thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Cuddy next.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I take some umbrage with the councillor suggesting, and this isn't, this isn't cross-debate, but I take some umbrage with the councillor suggesting that this, that this council doesn't want, or doesn't encourage, or advocate for affordable housing, because, Your Worship, just two weeks ago, you and Deputy Mayor and a number of other councillors, including the councillor that just spoke, was just at-
Counselor Cuddy, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but I need you to keep it on the-
I will keep it on track. Thank you. But I would just want to suggest, Your Worship, that we do care for affordable housing, and we're working towards that goal. So, no, we can't always find these projects. I've found them in my ward, which I'm very fortunate for, and we will find them in other wards as well. But we do need to encourage housing and development wherever we can in this city, because we have a shortage, and we do need, as I think Counselor Lehman referred to, we do have a shortage, and we have a, we have a supply issue. So, thank you, and I'll see.
Thank you. Oh, Counselor Stevenson, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick comment and a reminder that this is private property, and the investment is private dollars.
Hold on, Counselor Stevenson. I need the Counselor Van Meerebergen and Hopkins, like, you're talking loud enough that I can hear, and I'm trying to listen to the councillor, so, okay. Go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I just quickly wanted to remind the public, if they're listening, that this is privately-owned land and private dollars being invested. So this isn't city money, it's not our project. You know, there's that old saying, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. And we have a lot of developments that are sitting un, they're not moving forward. And is it maybe because we whittled away at the original plan to the point where now it just doesn't make any sense for somebody to invest their private dollars into it? And I hope we haven't done that in this case. I hope that this moves forward with the eight stories. I'm very excited to support this. It's great when the local councillors support it, and that we get to allow a private citizen to invest their money in our city and provide very much-needed housing. There's a lot of people, whether it's people who are living in homes now, who might like to downsize into an apartment, somebody who just wants to live in that great area and have a great apartment, and I think our city's better for it.
Okay. That exhausts my speakers list. On the as amended motion, Counselor Roman, go ahead.
Thank you. And through you, on the as amended motion first, I'd like to say I do not believe this was a debate on, a wider debate on trickle-down economics. I believe that we were dealing with the substance of the motion that was in front of us, which is the eight stories instead of a refusal of a six-story, or 10-story story at that point. The end of the day, I agree with my colleagues, you know, affordability is an issue. How we get there is, I would say, something that we're working on on many different levels, and in our advocacy every day that we do. Regarding infrastructure, as mentioned, there is pressure on some of our local resources. But in terms of capacity, in terms of roadway capacity, in terms of sewer capacity, in terms of those things, there is sufficient, and we're also undergoing some upgrades in the area already to support the development that is there. Again, I think that sometimes when we have these conversations, they become more philosophical than they are related to the actual motion that's on the floor. And the importance here is for the public to understand that there is a developer coming forward with an application, and that the developer, through ongoing conversations with staff and with members of council, has arrived on a position that they can support. And I think that that's important. Again, as we talk about, why is it, why is it essential for private partnerships to be part of the discussion that we're going through, is that we have to be able to find a way forward so that things get built, so that housing is available, so that there are units available for people in our community. Again, I agree with those that are saying, well, it's a supply and demand issue. It absolutely is. But we also have to consider, when we're having these discussions, that the developer ultimately is in a position that they have to be able to build the product that they are building. And so six may not have been developable with enough of a return on investment. My hope is that eight is.
That exhausts my speakers list. On the as amended motion, okay, we're going to open that for voting.
Counselor Plose, the vote's yes?
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 2.
Thank you. That concludes the sixth report of the Planning and Development Committee.
Okay. We're on to the fifth report of the SPPC. It's a three-item meeting. I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Lewis to present that report.
Thank you, Your Worship. I've been asked to deal with item two, the Economic Development Strategy Appointment of Consultants separately, so I am prepared to put items one and three on the floor now.
Anybody want any of those separately? Beyond what was mentioned? Okay. I'll put you, let you put that motion on the floor. It's so moved, one and three. Okay, one and three's on the floor. Any discussion on one and three? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Counselor Plose, the vote's yes?
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Go ahead.
And I'm now prepared to put item two, the Economic Development Strategy Appointment of Consultants, on the floor. And I'll just advise the Chair, if you want to go to her first, that Counselor Stevenson has to have this one dealt with separately.
Sure. It's on the floor. Counselor Stevenson, go ahead.
Thank you. I had an amendment that I circulated to the Clerk, and they circulated to councillors just while we were having this meeting. I'll read it out. At part E, that Civic Administration be directed to provide the financial statements for the London Economic Development Corporation, LEDC, for 2022 and 2023 at the next meeting of Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee in closed session.
Point of order.
My point of order is that this is, this is not integrally related to this motion, and it's, it would be more appropriate as a standalone motion at a separate time, but should not be added to this as an amendment, because it's not closely enough related.
That's a point of order, so just give me a moment. I hadn't even got to a second or yet, but you jumped in with the point of order. So I'm going to actually agree with you, Counselor Trow South, about the point of order about this probably has, this particular amendment has a better path forward through a committee structure. The item before us relates to the appointment of the consultant to develop an economic development strategy, the source of financing for that, the authorizations to move forward with signing the contracts and the agreement. It doesn't have to do with the LEDC specifically, it's the overarching strategy. So I think if the councillor would like to seek some motion related to LEDC or any other economic development corporation, that through the, through the committee cycle would be the most appropriate way. So I agree with the councillor's point of order, and so I would say that's not an appropriate amendment for this particular item that is on the floor before us today.
Okay. I hear you on that. I realize as we were voting on one and three that I picked the wrong one. It should have been a part of the communication from the councillors. But that's okay, I'll bring it forward at another committee.
I really appreciate that, Counsel. Okay. So what we have is just number two on the floor, as it was through committee. Any other discussion on that? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Counselor Plose, the vote's yes?
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 2.
And that completes the fifth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. Okay, Counselor Frank's going to present the added reports, of which we have one from Council in Closed Session. You can read the whole thing. We're going to vote on them as two separate pieces, though. So go ahead.
Thank you. So your Council in Closed Session report, item one, lease agreement renewals for office space 520 Wellington Street, Centennial House, that on the recommendation of the Deputy City Manager, finance supports with the concurrence of the Director of Fleet and Facilities on the advice of the Director of Realty Services with respect to lease of commercial office space located at 520 Wellington Street, Centennial House, the five agreement amending terms of lease, the lease renewal agreements, which are as appendix A, B, C, D, and E, between the City and Centennial House Limited, the landlord for office units totaling approximately 13,253 square feet of rentable space located at 520 Wellington Street, Centennial House, being units 1 to 3, unit 4, unit 7, 8, unit 10, and units 11 to 12, for a term of three years and six months for units 1 to 3 and unit 4, a term of three years and four months for unit 7 to 8, for three years and one month for unit 10, and three years and three months for units 11 and 12. And all lease renewal agreements ending on December 31, 2028, with two further options to renew at two years each, be approved. And item two, execution of 2023 to 2026, collective agreement for Local Union 101, Canadian Union of Public Employees, QB Local 101, that on the recommendation of the Deputy City Manager, enterprise supports and Civic Administration be, that Civic Administration be directed to undertake all administrative acts that are necessary in order for the Mayor and the City Clerk to obtain the necessary authorization to execute the collective agreement for years 2023 to 2026. Appendix as appendix C to the staff report dated April 9, 2025, pursuant to the memorandum of agreement dated June 28, 2023, appendix A, and the agreed two items dated February 6, 2023, and February 28, 2023, appendix B, between the Corporation of the City of London and Local Union Number 101, Canadian Union of Public Employees, QB 101, that progress is made with respect to item 4.3 as noted on the public agenda.
Okay. And on clause two, I'm going to make a conflict declaration on that, because I have a personal and direct interest in that report, and will not be participating in the discussion on that matter. I'll note that the declaration language was provided to me as part of confidential advice I received from the Integrity Commissioner. So for that piece, I'll have the Deputy Mayor chair the meeting. But we'll deal with clause one first. And so clause one is on the floor from Counselor Frank. Any discussion on clause one of the report from Council in Closed Session? Okay. Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Counselor Plose, the vote's yes?
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, I'll hand the chair to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I will take the chair, noting the Mayor has declared a conflict, and go to Counselor Frank to put clause two on the floor.
Thank you. I put clause two on the floor.
And looking for any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll ask the Clerk to open the vote.
Counselor Plose, the vote's yes?
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0 with one recusal.
And I will return the chair to Mayor Morgan. Thank you, and I'll thank Counselor Frank for the report. That ends added reports. Deferred matters, there are none. Inquiries, any inquiries? There are none. Emergent motions, there were none submitted. We're on to bylaws. Just give me one second, I'm going to tell you how we're doing the bylaw. So right now we have all of them together. So unless someone has a problem with that, that's how we're going to proceed. Okay, Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, I just want to confirm, are we doing the Sarnia Road bylaw?
Yeah, we're doing all of them. No one indicated in advance to the clerks that we want to do that, but you can do it now, it'll just take a little longer to reword all the motions. So if you want something separate, we could do that.
Yeah, I'd like that one separate. Next time I'll know to pull it.
Sure. Yeah. Okay. Counselor Hillier, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like bills 137 and 148, both relating to mine. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that. Just give us a few minutes. Oh, Counselor Stevenson, go ahead.
Sorry to add one, but I'd like to pull 132.
132, okay. Will just be a few minutes to organize that. Okay, we can do this in 12 separate votes, so great news. So what we're going to- So what we're going to do is everything except the items that were pulled, which is 132 for councillor Stevenson, 137 and 148 for councillor Hillier, and then the added ones related to Sarnia Road, that councillor Hopkins and maybe some others wanted. So those are all out. Everything else is in on the first vote. Okay? So I'll need a mover and a second for that. Councillor Cuddy, seconded by councillor Hillier. We're going to use both of you for all three readings. So we're on first reading of everything except the stuff that was pulled and we'll open that for voting.
Councillor Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
All right, same mover and seconder. And this is second reading of all of those items. Is there any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, we'll open this for voting.
Yes, by councillor Pelosi.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
And same mover and seconder for third reading. And we will open third reading as soon as it's-
Councillor Pelosi?
Yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, the next two we're going to do are 137 and 148 at councillor Hillier's request. So I'll need a mover and a second for those two items. Moved by deputy mayor Lewis, seconded by councillor Van Meerebergen. We'll use you for all three iterations of this and we will open first reading for voting as soon as-
Councillor Pelosi votes yes.
Can you just clarify which one this is again?
This is the ones that councillor Hillier asked for separately. One thirty-seven, okay.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
All right, second reading of those same items. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
Third reading, same mover and seconder. We will open that for voting as soon as it's ready.
Yes, by councillor Pelosi.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
Okay, next, we're going to deal with 132, which is the one that councillor Stevenson, you asked for separately. I'll look for a mover and a second for 132. I have councillor Hopkins and Hillier on that. And I'll just be a minute to load those three votes in. And then we will open first reading as soon as they are ready. It's open, councillor Pelosi.
Councillor Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
Okay, second reading, same mover and seconder. Look for any discussion on this. Okay, seeing none, we'll open second reading for voting.
Councillor Pelosi votes yes.
Councillor Lehman votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
All right, third and final reading of bill 132. I'll use the same mover and seconder and we'll open third reading for voting.
Councillor Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
Okay, the next set of bills we'll deal with are the added ones related to the Sarnia Road development. So I'll look for a mover and a second for those. Councillor Stevenson and councillor Cuddy will be the movers and seconders for all three readings. Just be a minute to load those three readings in and then I will open the first reading as soon as they're all in. I'll let you know when we're ready, councillor Pelosi. It's open now, councillor Pelosi.
Councillor Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
Okay, and second reading on this, same mover and seconder. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open-
Councillor Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
All right, third and final reading of this one. Same mover and seconder, we'll open-
Councillor Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
Okay, that concludes bylaws. That means I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn, which we can do by hand, moved by councillor Van Meerebergen, seconded by councillor Frank. All those in favor of adjournment?
Motion carries.
That carries, we're adjourned.